How are you?
I'm good.
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 How are you?
I'm good. you hear onto us directly, and we can try to work on those on a case-by-case basis. But also, we wanted to share some news about 112th Avenue. Sherman, in our engineering department and our operating team at Union Pacific, when presented with the problem and the issue of the continued occupied crossings at 112th, identified a potential mitigation effort on our part, and we plan to implement it. What we plan to do this month, actually, construction is slated, paid for by Union Pacific Railroad, construction is slated on October 14th, and what we plan to do is install an air hose connection underneath the crossing to run parallel to the train tracks beneath 112th Avenue. What this will allow us to do is keep our train cars connected to air so that we are able to more easily cut a train or break a train. And I'm going to ask that Sherman yield his three minutes to me so I can continue if that's --
Absolutely.
-- if that pleases the group. So what that'll allow us to do is break the train so that traffic can continue to utilize 112th Avenue while our work is being done. Normally, our crews don't cut trains because of the time it takes to reestablish air pressure and the testing that's required to reestablish air pressure for all the cars. It takes a lot more time to cut a train and then have to reassemble it, walk the entire length of the train, retie those handbrakes, and get the train back moving again. With the air hose connection, we will be able to split the train, allow 112th to be used while we do our work, and more quickly bring the train back together to continue. So that's one idea that we had as a way to mitigate some of the congestion at that particular pinch point. We hope that that's a good faith effort, that you understand, that we hear you, we understand the frustrations from the community, and we are attempting to come to the table with some solutions on our end. We realize that that's not an end-all, be-all, but just something that can hopefully mitigate some of the frustrations. Very last, I would like to enter two phone numbers into the record and encourage you to share these phone numbers widely. The Union Pacific Risk Management Communications Center has a phone number posted at all of the rail crossings. It's an emergency phone number. It helps for us to know, to have community members log issues so that we can have a record of the issues that occur at various crossings. We can also identify patterns and verify some of the anecdotal information that we sometimes hear as traffic reports and that sort of thing. So I'd like to encourage you to utilize our numbers, and while it's, you know, not an opportunity to call the train conductor and ask him to pull the, or the engineer and ask him to pull the train forward, it at least gives us some data so that we can identify where our problem areas are. The Union Pacific Risk Management Communications Center phone number, it's an 800 number, it is posted at the crossing, but for your record, it's, that phone number is 1-888-877-7267. The second number I'd like to give you is an emergency phone number. If there is something that has gone on that requires more immediate attention and a higher level of urgency and response, we do have an additional number, which our RMC number would route to, but I'm going to give you that number directly. That phone number for an emergency contact at Union Pacific Railroad is 1-800-848-8715. And we appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. We fully expect that issues may still continue to come up, and we want to be open and continue a dialogue about how we can be partners with the community in addressing or minimizing those impacts. Thanks for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions now if it's appropriate in this forum or at a time that you'd like to follow up.
No, now's fine, and there are several council members that have lit their buttons up to ask some questions or have some comments. We'll start with Mr. Teeter.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight. I'm sure the public is excited to hear about this. I did meet with the fire department last Monday morning, matter of fact. My background was 34 years with the fire service, and so I hear all their complaints right up front. They're very concerned about, especially 112th, as far as their emergencies response times, as well as their ambulance service, and this news here is really going to give them some hopes here. Also, we have 104th down now for, what, two weeks, three weeks?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days, and that's going to be very important to keep that 96th opened up during that time period, to make sure that we've already put the burden on the people for moving them around, but we've got to keep those other arteries open at that, if we can, up there. And I guess, oh yes, we was talking about these airlines, is there any kind of a timeframe when we might get this in place?
I have, our UP forces and our contractor will be out there this Monday. I think they're starting at 7:30. We won't need to close a road, anything like that, we're going to have them bore under it, going to pay for hydraulic boring and still that way. I know it was a big concern of closing that road while 104th was already closed, so we're going to do hydraulic boring through it, and then hopefully by the 14th, it's up and running.
Great, thank you.
And sir, if I may?
Sure.
On regarding the 104th closure, I appreciate the city communicating with us clearly that we need some coordination and sequencing in the construction schedule there. We have notified, Union Pacific has notified our dispatch center out of Omaha, and we've also notified our senior manager of terminal operations, he runs the Greeley subdivision and is stationed out of the LaSalle yard, Union Pacific's yard at LaSalle. Both, you know, the dispatch center and our local leadership is aware of the closure at 104th, and so they want to be sensitive to that if at all possible.
Right. Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I also want to thank you for being here tonight to address this problem, and I certainly want to reiterate what Councilman Teeter said. I mean, the average person, if you get stopped for 10 or 15 minutes, that's bad enough, but emergency vehicles, where somebody's life is in the balance, that's a completely different issue. And we've got to have these things open for emergency vehicles to get through. I mean, there just can't be any compromise on that that I can see. How many trains per day do we get on the UP line?
That number varies. I can only speak in aggregate to tell you now that our traffic volume is up by more than 30%.
That was what I was after, 30% higher than, what, say, a year ago?
30% over last year, over 2013, yeah, year over year.
That's very obvious.
And honestly, I don't know how, I don't want to guess how many trains we have. I know that at different, because we have customers all along the Greeley subdivision, and because of our auto racks, it varies by day. I can get back to you, though, with a number.
Okay, well, 30% are just the percentage of increase over the past year, because that's a significant amount, and I think that anybody who lives in the city has noticed that it's been a significant increase about, not just stopped and blocking, but trains moving at about four miles an hour, and, you know, taking 10 or 15 minutes to get You were talking about a connection, there was a word that you were using that I didn't understand, what was?
With regard --
Something to remedy the air pressure connection that you're going to have to disconnect and then?
The air hose connection will --
Air hose, okay, I got, I know what that is, sure.
That's okay, sorry if I was unclear.
Okay. How do you, how will you remedy that situation as far as getting the whole train pressurized again?
Sure, so with the air hose connection, the train crew will be allowed to connect the two cars that are separated to the air hose, so maintain air pressure and airflow through the hose passing through.
I see, that's what we're going under the road.
Underneath the road. So then, it'll be a much shorter job when that, when those two cars are disconnected from the hose and brought back together over the crossing. Does that explain it? Does that explain it that clearly?
Yes, perfectly, it explains it perfectly. And of course, it's not just 112th, as Rick pointed out, you know, when 104th gets completed, it's going to be 104th, and with the traffic being taken off of 104th, it's going to be 96 for at least the next three weeks. And I have just, how long is an average train?
It can vary.
Hundred cars?
Yeah, it can vary, but the car, the train, the unit trains that we have been running, unit trains and manifest trains are between 96 and 108 cars, I would say.
I mean, in miles or feet, how many feet is --
About, I think, between 6400 feet and 7200 feet, is that about right?
Rough average crude oil train, 72 feet plus the knuckle, so 72.5 feet per car, and that's just throwing out an average. I mean, some are only 55 feet, but I always use the longest one. That's what we design our sightings to.
Say, 100 cars is 72 feet?
Seventy-two hundred feet.
So say 70?
Hundred cars times 72, 7200 feet.
Got you, add two zeros. Okay. So that's more than a mile, it's a mile between these major streets. You know, we don't worry about 120th, but between 112th and 104th, that's a mile, 104th and 96th, that's a mile, 9688, that's a mile. So, because there's an overpass. Traffic just goes over the railroad track on 120th. I'll talk to you about that, okay? All right. I mean, I know that the more cars you have, the more money you make, the more you can transport, but having a train that's more than a mile long, where you can't just stop it between an intersection, that's what's creating the problem. But how long is it going to take them to disconnect and hook up the air brake?
I think our --
You mean, how long would it take them to cut a car? Is that what you mean? When they get to a cross --
Yeah, say, the train's going along and it stops, how long is it going to take from that point to get the car clear of the intersection?
They have to, let's just use 112th Street. If they back down all the way into the siding, they have to stay 250 feet away from the crossing, that's our regulation out here, so they'll break it at 250 feet. All they do is when they get out, the conductor will get out, cut the air release, and then they'll pull it forward, that's when you see them pulling north side of that crossing. So, I mean, just depending on what they have to do, how much they have to release, it just depends on the conductor and the engineer on what they're operating at the time. I couldn't say a determined time, we don't have a set standard of how long it should take. It just depends on what they're carrying, what the load is, and how far they have, what, how many cars will fit on that side of the card, of the siding, and how many will fit on that side of the siding.
So a siding is a, hazeltean siding is what we refer to as the kind of secondary track or kind of shoulder, if you will, off of our main line and near 112th Street. And so what Sherman's referring to is this kind of additional parking space where we can put a train if we need to utilize both the, you know, the mainline tracks and have this siding area. In terms of reattaching the train, I don't want to give you an incorrect timeframe, and I don't think that there's an absolute number where it always takes a certain amount of time, but if the crew were to have to walk the length of the train and tie handbrakes and check air pressure on each car for a train as long as we've been talking about, you can imagine how long it would take to walk a mile and do work on each car.
That's probably four minutes, I was, you know?
Well, to do that, and --
Fifteen?
Even, even longer, probably.
Fifteen, fifteen minutes, I mean.
But to do that for just the one car that's cut, it would be a significant reduction of time, so it becomes a far more, it becomes more of an opportunity for the train crew to cut the train, to allow traffic to pass on 112th while they're doing their work, and then reestablish the connection. If I were using a round figure, just to give you a sense of time, the old way, you know, if there wasn't an air hose connection there, it might take 45 minutes to walk the train and put it all back together. With, you know, the fewer numbers of cars that they would have to reestablish air and connect, it might take less than 10 minutes to do that.
So you're planning to do that on 112th, 104th, 96th, and 88th?
We're planning to do that on 112th for now.
And when would you plan to do 104th?
We will evaluate how effective this is and where the other pinch points or crossings are. We know that there are a couple of other things in the works in terms of long-term planning on those other crossings, so our plan for right now is to address 112th. That's also a good opportunity for us because we have the, what we refer to as the hazeltean siding, or this other set-out track where we have additional storage space for train cars at that location. That's why we've chosen 112th.
Because, you know, 104th is the only road that we're talking about that's four lanes, it's going to be four lanes when they get through working on, and that's going to be maybe in about three or four weeks. So that's going to be much more of a concern, I think, than any of the other intersections. Why are we, why do we not have a date to get that done?
I can explain that to you, Mr. Benson, when I have my comments, I'll explain that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, again, I certainly appreciate your being here tonight to address these issues. I mean, at least, let's hope that we get something done, and I would ask that you come back maybe in six months and tell us what you've accomplished to alleviate the problem. Can you do that?
Yes, we can come back in six months, and we can stay in communication more frequently in between times as well.
All right, good, thank you very much.
I think that's reasonable.
Councilwoman Carson?
Hi, Mr. Spear, Ms. Cassidy, thank you for coming. I live in River Run, and Mr. Benson's referring to the 120th, so in River Run, you cannot get out of our development to go to the west without crossing over these railroad tracks. I've been there 13 years, I cannot tell you how many days I've been late to work because of the train. I can't tell you how many phone calls I get from residents who are late to work because of the train. I know I had explained to my employer the train, they said, "Well, don't they have a schedule?" No, there is no schedule. You have no clue when this train is coming in and out. Excuse me if I heard incorrectly, but the conductor is not splitting the train because it takes too much of his time. It doesn't matter then, the time is taking from this entire community in order to be able to get to work on time in order for emergency vehicles to go through. The 27J School District, I know, has severe problems getting kids to and from school on time because of the train and the way it stops. Since I've lived there, I've witnessed the train being stopped for well over 24 hours with no movement, just in the last X amount of months. It's been, I can, I can think of four times, because my phone rings off the wall when it happens, that the train was stopped for well over four hours. Then I'm told it's legally allowed, I think it's, is it 15 minutes that you're legally allowed to block an intersection?
Ten to 15 minutes is what our rule is.
That's right. By living there, I can tell you, I do not believe you're in compliance with the law probably any time you stop that train. I don't think I've ever been stopped by the train, other than maybe 2% of the time that it leaves within that, that amount of time. And if it is because it's just so time-hindering for the conductor to split that train, that's really not an acceptable answer to me, because, like I said, you have made prisoner all the citizens who live on that side, and they can't get out. It's been a terrible nightmare, and then, as Mr. Teeter brought up, when it comes to emergency equipment, and then you have to start turning around and finding other ways to, whether you're hot pursued in an ambulance, trying to get to somebody's house, a fire truck, I don't know, but that is just not acceptable. And, and school kids are late, I can't tell you how many times in a month children are late home from school, especially home from school because of this train. You're making it sound like the problem is because the train traffic has increased over the last year. I will tell you, in 13 years, it is worse, but it has been a problem from the day I moved in there 13 years ago, and, and citizens that live there have complained about this all along. So thank you for coming, and hopefully, like I said, I do believe you, you need to think about, your engineers need to comply with the law if it's 10 or 15 minutes.
Mayor Ford and Councilwoman Carson, if I may, just a clarification about the conductor and the engineer's operation in terms of the time that it would take for them to tie the train. It's not so much out of respect for their time, that they're busy and don't want to take the time, it's that in reconnecting that train, the train would be occupying the crossing while they walk the train to make sure the air has been reestablished. So we're saying that that would be 45 minutes additional out of the motorists' time that they would be sitting at an occupied crossing while the engineer is reestablishing the air hose pressure, or the air brake pressure, testing and tying the handbrakes for all the cars.
So is that legal then, during that process then? Do you fall within legality then if it's 45 minutes of blocking that intersection?
Well, typically, we wouldn't break a train or cut a train unless there were an emergency situation, knowing that it would take, you know, a significant amount of time to reconnect the train cars.
What, what is the standard operating procedure? Why, why are these trains stopping there continually, day after day after day?
Sure, we have roughly between 55 and 65 customers along our Greeley subdivision, so think of the, the Union Pacific train line that, that runs along US 85 as a long driveway where we have a number of customers that we're serving. So sometimes when you see the train, I know it's maddening and frustrating when you see the train just moving back and forth slowly, or stopping and then moving a little bit. What they're typically doing is dropping off cars to customers and coming back and picking up the train and pulling forward, or separating cars out. So part of the reason we're seeing the heavy volume that you're talking about in the occupied crossing is because we have so many customers along the Greeley subdivision that we're serving. We constantly look at better and more efficient ways to do that from the standpoint of train length, making sure that we have sightings that can fit the lengths of trains, and that's where our dispatch coordinates with our terminal managers. Our terminal managers control the traffic in and out of our yard, so they wouldn't send a train out of Denver or out of LaSalle, knowing that it would occupy two crossings, say, in the example that Councilwoman Benson was using. If a train is over a mile long and there are two road crossings that are within a mile, if that train were stopped, it would occupy two crossings, I think is the logic you were using in terms of the train length. So our dispatch and our terminal managers are constantly evaluating what type of traffic and how to couple our traffic, given our facilities that we have, the different lengths of sightings, for example, and we try to piece all of that together for a smooth operation. I realize that it's less than ideal now, and we have, you know, a couple of ideas in terms of where we can, where we can improve and where we can, you know, like, for example, this air hose connection that we wish to establish at 112th, but we realize that the problem with this train volume doesn't alleviate the congestion that you're seeing and the challenge. We hope to mitigate it, and we hope to better and more efficiently manage our fleet so that it works, that we can move our traffic and motorists aren't continually stopped. That's where we hope that the communication lines will stay open so that we can identify better options.
I hope so, too, and I will tell you, I don't know if I've really ever witnessed this train moving, this train has just stopped. We've all thought that the conductor must live in River Run, but there is no moving of a train, and, and I don't understand why they picked that location, because if you go further to the north, correct me if I'm wrong there, when you get north of 136th, you would have more than enough room to not, right?
No, it's, I'll explain some of that one, it's my turn.
Yeah, okay, okay, and I'm done, it's just very frustrated, the citizens where I live are very frustrated, and it, it doesn't make for a happy community.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you for joining us, and I appreciate that you're here to communicate with the city and along with the mayor. My concerns aren't so much with the traffic stopping, because I think we've beat that horse pretty good now. My concerns are, what training is being provided and for the increased volume of engineers for quiet crossings? I've noticed that at sporadic times now, not just individual times, at 4:30 in the morning on Wednesdays, or 7 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, or 11:30 at night on a Saturday as well, the engineers are blowing their horn all the way down the line, and I mean, you can hear it from 112th easily, and I'm on 72nd, and you hear that all the way down, and I understand that the engineer has discretion at that point, whether he wants to blow his horn or not at the crossing, but going all the way down the line is clearly a problem, and I hear it from my residents when they're right off of the railroad track. I'm a good quarter mile, if not half mile off of the railroad, and I hear it all the way down. So my concern is, we've, as a community, have invested a significant amount of money in quiet crossings, and with the increase of volume, what are the engineers being told, because it doesn't feel or even seem like they care about where they're at, and it feels more out of control than in control at this point. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that it is a problem, because we have invested a lot of money here.
Mr. Amador, if I can, these are things that I've brought up with the UP about our concerns that have to do with the Burlington Northern Line, which is the line that you're talking about, and the one good thing about the contacts that we have now with the UP and the relationship that we're building is they're actually going to help us with contacts with the B&amp;N, and our quiet crossings are on the B&amp;N line, that's the one that comes along Highway 2, which is where we have the problem with the horns blowing all the time. So these aren't the right guys, but I just didn't want them to have to try to answer something for the B&amp;N Railroad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I stand corrected.
Mayor Ford and Councilwoman Amador, I'll tell you, we do, we do train our crews based on federal railroad administration standards in terms of horn noise, and so there is some discretion with the crews if they see a trespasser or if they see a car approaching a crossing, where they can act outside of those guidelines from the FRA. But typically, our crews are supposed to use a standard FRA horn signal at non-quiet-zone intersections, and then if there is a quiet zone like there is on Burlington Northern Santa Fe's line, the conductor and engineer do still have the opportunity to use an audible warning, as we call it, the horn noise, if a situation presents. So even if they're in a quiet zone, if they see a car approaching, they will sound a horn, or if they see a person in the vicinity of the tracks or something, they will sound it for those reasons. And Mayor Ford is correct, he asked me to be in contact, I forwarded some information to my counterpart at BNSF and let them know that they have issues. I know one of your staff members, Michelle Halsted, also reached out to BNSF, and we're happy to help facilitate that conversation if we can, to reiterate.
Great, and I guess I'll go last, because I've gotten through the council that had comments or questions, and maybe I should have went first. As you all know on the council, you authorized some letters that I signed to go out to the UP concerning some of the issues that we're having. From my perspective is that there is a lack of sightings, which is, you have the main line, the siding is a track that sits beside the main line, where they can pull over and park the train and let another train go by. That siding, the hazeltean siding goes from pretty much 104th to 120th, so 112th's in the middle, and the train's too long to fit in the siding without blocking 112th. Correct, Sherman?
Yes, sir.
That's why -- That's why, not necessarily that one hundred and fourth is a problem where they're parking trains. They're parking trains between one hundred and fourth and one hundred and twentieth, blocking one hundred and twelfth. The new airline will allow them to break the train and reconnect the train in a timely manner to allow the road to stay open and allow traffic to pass. My understanding and a number that I heard is about an additional five hundred cars a day from what you used to do, which would be five-unit trains, to help you out with that number. And one of the good things, because when I, after writing the letter and sitting down with Sarah and Sherman, they heard the same thing from me that they're hearing from all of you, the frustrations that our communities have to go through. What about safety vehicles? What about these things? So, some of the things we talked about is long-term partnerships to where we are working collaboratively towards overpasses, grade-separated crossings, Highway Eighty, or Eighty-Eighth Avenue, one hundred and fourth Avenue, one hundred and twentieth Avenue, when the monies are available, to help, have them help us in participation to get these grade-separated crossings that our community deserves. The problem is, right now, the finances aren't there, the state doesn't have the money, and we need to rely upon the state to help us cover some of the burdens of those grade-separated crossings. And as you all recall, one of the ones that we were looking at as an additional piece to the 2K initiative was Eighty-Eighth Avenue. So, it's a siding issue more than it is a crossing issue when it comes to the trains parking across the roads. That's why one hundred and twelve's been so burdensome. I think the airline will work. I did make it aware to the representatives that are here tonight that we did put signs up at all of our UP crossings with the phone number that you all heard tonight, so that complaints could be filed by residents as they have to wait, so that the UP can better understand where the problems are along their tracks, so that we can help to address the needs based on complaints coming in from our residents. So, if the residents are out there and they have a train blocking the road, I implore them to call the number and file the complaint, so that it'll help the UP and help the city to be able to identify and make adjustments where these trains are crossing the road. And just for some background information for the council and for the citizens that are here, Havana Street from one hundred and fourth approximately, from one hundred and fourth to one hundred and twentieth, or I'm sorry, one hundred and twelfth to one hundred and twentieth, is owned by the UP. We leased that back. And at one time, the city wanted to close Havana between one hundred and twelfth to one hundred and twentieth, which would have been detrimental based on the increase in train traffic that we're seeing today. So, I'm glad that we were able to keep Havana Street open and continue to partner with the UP. And this construction on one hundred and fourth, last week, when the construction started, I started getting a lot of calls, because there was a train parked for over an hour on one hundred and twelfth. With one hundred and fourth being closed down, it was gridlocked through our neighborhoods. And the first thing I did after I received that first call was get ahold of the staff and have them contact Sarah and Sherman and notify the UP that it's okay to block. They have a twenty-one-day window to block one hundred and fourth, because nobody could go across it anyway, so that they can avoid crossing one hundred and twelfth. So, I think the biggest and best information out of tonight and what's going on with the UP is the fact that we're building a relationship. We have good contacts. When you call, they call you back, they're on top of it. And I can call our staff and with the UP, they can get the information right away, so that we can help avoid what happened last week. I haven't got the calls since then, because the problem was taken care of, and you block one hundred and fourth instead of one hundred and twelfth. So, I think it's the communication piece that has been the most helpful. And the construction, to get it done in a timely manner, I think is great. And to avoid any traffic delays because of the construction on the fourteenth for the airline is even better, so that traffic will still flow, we can get the airlines in, and hopefully reduce the amount of trains that are blocking one hundred and twelfth, because that's been probably the biggest impact from a crossing that we've had in our community. I really appreciate both of you coming in tonight. I know we're not through our problems. I know we will continue to struggle and continue to have problems. But as long as we're working together to try to solve those problems, the two entities, the city and the UP, have an opportunity to try to alleviate some of the problems that we're both faced with. And the help that you've offered with the BNSF will be greatly appreciated too. And there's just a problem where we have both rail lines run through our community, and we have residents that get trapped in between both rail lines. And that's a problem from a safety issue. And that's why the frustrating letter to begin with, and then the sit-down meetings that we've had. But I truly appreciate, I think it's the best out of all the years I've been with the city, from a communication standpoint, that we've ever had with either one of the railroads. And as long as we know that you'll react when we call and try to fix the problems, I'm thoroughly appreciative of the work you're doing at one hundred and twelfth and the communication that you continue to provide to our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and thanks for the time tonight. I know we've taken up a lot of time on the front end of your very packed agenda. This conversation can certainly go on. I appreciate the comments. We also want to be the best, not just at responsiveness, but at minimizing the train impact. So, realize that that's a goal of ours internally as well, as I know that's important to you. And I'll look forward to staying in contact. I know that I've taken notes on a number of follow-up items that we need to continue to work on together. So, this is not the end of the conversation. We'll stay in touch. And per the request, we will come back more formally in six months, but stay in contact, of course, in the meantime.
I appreciate that. I have one more council member that wants to have some comment, and that's Mr. Bullock.
Yes, I was just going to ask if you could come back in three months, and then, three months after that, I have more timely updates instead of six months down the road. So, it gives us a chance to start seeing how this is working, and if there's anything we can comment to it when one hundred and fourth opens back up.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for the time.
Okay, next, I'm going to call Jennifer Olson. Looks like you're here for a zoning case as well? And if so, I'll have you wait until we bring that zoning case forward.
Yes, Mayor. I'll be talking after Caitlin Zeiler presents our case.
Okay, thank you. And then, A. Mauer, Mayor? Are you here for a zoning case as well? Sir?
Condition used.
Okay, then you'll be on the docket. Thank you. All right. Mayana? You just state your name and address for the record, please.
Mayana Schimpf, sixty-eighty-one Locust Street, Commerce City, Colorado, eight-zero-zero-two-two. Good evening, Mayor Ford, and city council members, and staff, and my community. I just wanted to come tonight to talk a little about safety along Sixtieth and Kearney. I am the president for our PTO at Kearney Middle School, and it has been brought to my attention by a few other parents, that this has become an unsafe crossing for our kids. I have talked to council people in the past, when I have seen them out in the community, about my concern for this crossing. With the morning glare, the kids come down Pioneer Park to cross at Kearney, to come up Kearney, to go to the school, and then after school, they cross back. So, I think a lot of parents are having concerns with seeing the kids, and I know that when I take my kids, they, you know, automatically dash out in front. So, if you're not paying attention, or you know you're going along, there's a lot of kids crossing. So, that has been a concern from some of our parents. We also are concerned that there are no school zones lights around Kearney Middle School. And we have worked with, I know that Kearney works with the SROs to make sure the kids cross safely around the school, but we wanted to know why there wasn't any school zone lights around Kearney. I think Kearney is the only school in the district that doesn't have them. I think it might be a good conversation maybe to have with you guys and the school board members, to maybe facilitate something like that. I don't know how we, as parents, would go about getting these things set up. So, I think I just wanted to bring that to you. I also wanted to invite you into Kearney right now, into our schools, and be part of our children's education. We, as parents, have school meetings on the last Monday of the month, so we just had one. And so, we alternate. Our next meeting will be the last Monday of this month, and it will be in the morning at nine o'clock. So, we try to alternate it, so some moms can come and dads can come on the next meeting. And so, we encourage you to attend those meetings, attend our school. There's lots of sports going on right now. Our kids are doing a candy bar sale, and I just got the total of kids that checked out boxes today. So, in the core city, there'll be about one hundred and fifty kids selling chocolates for the PE and arts program. We also are going to try to fund the trip to Mesa Verde. I don't know if any of you know about that trip. Kearney does a reading incentive program, so that if you log your minutes of your reading every day until the trip, Kearney pays for kids to go, and that's for the entire school, six through eight. So, and I know that's a big trip to fund. I know I'm running out of time. Just a quick comment from me as a community member, I'd like to say I'm excited about our history museum. It's amazing that we have that. I know as a mother, when we do road trips, I make it a point to stop in little towns and check out the little museums. So, maybe somewhere down the line, a family will stop in Commerce City and see our amazing history. Thank you.
Go ahead and stay there for a second, just in case we have some comments. I know I have some. I think that when it comes to asking about safety crossing lights for schools, I can't speak to why there's none on Sixtieth. I would just say that's, I went to Kearney Middle School, that's the school I attended, and that was a long time ago. And things have changed, and I agree, there's more traffic on Sixtieth. I think probably, in my opinion, Kearney sits quite a ways away from Sixtieth. It's at the intersection of Sixty-second and Kearney. And so, that's probably why you're not seeing crossing lights there. I know we do have some on Sixtieth for Rose Hill, up on top of the hill. But to get our attention, this is a perfect place to come. I know our police department's here, Maria DeAndrea, our public works director, sitting here in the audience and taking notes. And I think it's, the opportunity now is to investigate the situation and see if it warrants safety lights at that crossing, and what kind of agreement we have with the school district or participation from both entities for those things to happen. But I would ask Ms. DeAndrea to bring that back to the council and let us know whether it warrants those, and as to what the process is to get those put in, if it does warrant them. I appreciate you coming in. And when the kids get their candy bars, you know, they can come before a council meeting or whatever, and I would gladly purchase some or donate to the trip. So, we appreciate you coming in tonight, and I'm sure that our staff can get back in touch with you concerning the crossing at Sixtieth Avenue.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
You have comments? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, this is one of the things I brought up about six months ago, about a crossing light at Kearney and Sixtieth, because there's a light at Monaco, there's a light at Holly. And with the groundbreaking and opening of the new pool next year, I would really love to see a flashing crossing light at Kearney, so it just completely where kids cross, there is lights and everything. And the mayor's right, there is lights over at Rose Hill, and there's lights at Central for to slow the traffic, but there isn't anything on Sixty-second, or on Sixtieth, or any of the streets that border Kearney Middle School, as they are over at Adam City Middle School. So, I would like to see something put up, because we're going to have increasing traffic of kids when the pool does open over there. And I would like to get people aware of the fact now, so they slow down on Sixtieth, instead of trying to slow them down after the pool opens.
Okay.
And I would add that you do have a signal on, what is it, Fifty-sixth, and that's quite a ways away from Rose Hill also. So, I don't think it's too much to ask. And I know that before, we have said, you know, the comment has been made to me, you know, we're encouraging kids to cross at either Holly or Monaco, which, in all reality, yeah, that's probably the best place for them to cross, but we're talking about middle school kids. And they just, they, and especially this morning, I saw like seven kids going down the hill on their scooter and just crossing over. So, I mean, I know the SROs are working with the kids and making sure that they're safe and everything, but I do, I agree with Mr. Bullock. I do think that there should be some kind of crosswalk light that should be installed.
Well, and they'll look into it and come back with a recommendation through our public works department. And I think that's a proper way for that to be taken care of. There are the other signals, and we would want those kids to cross there.
Yeah.
But all in all, I think a lot of it has to do with speeds and stuff too. So, like on Fifty-sixth Avenue, you know, Sixty-second Avenue, the reason there hasn't been lights, I will tell you, is because the speeds are already in a residential neighborhood in twenty-five miles, the maximum. So, I know that's why they're not on those residential streets. Sixtieth, you know, because of its location. I think it needs to be looked at. And I'll look forward to a report from our public works department on to the need at that location.
All right, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
I need you to state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mary Morton, fifty-nine eighty, Sixty-first Avenue. And this is just something that we were talking about too, was maybe is there a possibility that even you could put a roundabout right there on Sixtieth and Kearney? I don't know.
Well, there's always a possibility that we could do those kind of things. The problem is, is what the cost is to put that kind of infrastructure in, because that's pretty major infrastructure when you put in a roundabout. It would be a lot cheaper for us to put lights.
I understand that, but a light? A roundabout? A light?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think as an alternative, a light instead of a roundabout, I think it's important to make safe crossings for kids.
It is.
Okay. But I think when we talk about roundabouts, whether they're safer for a child to cross, or a light with a signal is safer to cross, that's why we need to have the investigation from our public works department, who does that kind of stuff, and they can bring that information back, doesn't tell us what is warranted at that location for crossing. And trust me, now that that is no longer just a vacant wheat field, as it was when I went to school there, there are a lot of ball fields there, the skate park, and now the water parks going in, we know there will be additional child activity in the area.
Yeah.
And if a signal is warranted for a crossing, then that's what our engineers will bring back to us after they investigate the crossing situation.
I, as a grandmother and a school board member, I just would hate to see another sign for a memorial of a child that got killed crossing a street. And if there, you know, whatever ways we could do to remedy this situation, you know, I just hope that it could be explored.
Well, and as a board member from the school district, I would hope you'd be willing to partner with the city to alleviate the problem. So, based on whatever the findings are from our public works department, I'll be back. I don't even have a problem coming to one of your school board members and getting up and asking for participation from the school district to help us make that a safe crossing.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I need a motion to allow Councilman Benson to abstain from voting on the minutes because of his excused absence from the meeting. Mr. McAldoney?
Move to accuse Councilman Benson of voting on the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second to allow the abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No.
All right, now I need a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the minutes of July twenty-fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. McAldoney.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the minutes of July twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to the council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote.
a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed on the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove any of these items? Saying none, I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. McElhany?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
Have a motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda?
First item, resolution 2014-107, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City. Next item, ordinance 2022, an ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds in amount of $7,754.49 for the Bulletproof Vest program in the Police Department and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of ordinance, 2027, an ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Department of Justice, JAG, burn grant funds in the amount of $16,923 for the purchase of tasers to be used by the Police Department personnel and authorization of the expenditure thereof. Next item, ordinance 2032, an ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the CIPP fund in the amount of $680,000 and appropriating that amount for the loan to the Buffalo Highlands Metropolitan District and transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the solid waste fund to the CIPP fund in the amount of $1,345,000 to the CIP fund and appropriating that amount for the 96th Avenue Nucla to Tower project and authorizing the expenditure thereof. That's the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Bob. That's the titles have been read. Have a motion is second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, all of the consent agenda items were approved unanimously by council this evening. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. And before proceeding with tonight's public hearings, we need to amend the agenda to move resolution 2014-97 from the resolution section to the public hearing section and combine it with the related zoning ordinance, Z 910-14. Do I have a council member willing to make a motion to amend, make that amendment? Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Have a motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda has been amended. So we'll start with ordinance Z 706-99-01-02-06-14. I'm opening the public hearing on the zoning ordinance. Is the staff ready to make their presentation? Go right ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. This next case before you is Z-706-99-10-01-02-06-14. So 104th Avenue Investment Partners, the applicant is requesting to amend the Burlington Northern Catellus PUD Amendment III located at 104th and Highway Two. This neighborhood is known as Turnberry and was previously known as Linden. All right. So the subject site is the entire PUD is the hatched area, so it goes as far north as 112th and then south of 104th, right along Highway Two. It's currently zoned PUD, and within that PUD, there's a mix of uses. The comprehensive plan also calls out a variety of uses, including residential high and residential medium and commercial. So as most of you are aware, this development has an existing neighborhood that's been built out. So this is 104th Avenue. We've got Highway Two here. We have existing homes built in this core area right here, as well as some existing commercial development at the corner of Highway Two and 104th. So here's the case history. It was annexed back in 1997, zoned in 1998. The PUD was originally approved in 2001 and subsequently amended in 2002 and 2006. So the existing conditions, there are less than 300 single-family detached homes constructed. There are approximately 300 more lots plotted, that commercial development at the corner of Highway Two and 104th, and there's an existing park and ride at Revere and 104th. So the applicant is proposing five different amendments to the PUD. So here's the list of five, and then we'll go through each one individually. So the first one is adding a row for minimum density to the land use schedule. So this row, which has the star by it right here, is new to the PUD land use schedule and basically establishes a minimum density requirement for each of the different residential standards. So there's low-density residential or LDR, there's medium-density residential or MDR, and there's high-density residential or HDR. So the minimum density for all the LDR, low-density residential standards will be one dwelling unit per acre. The minimum density for the medium will be four dwelling units per acre, and the minimum density for the high-density residential sections will be eight dwelling units per acre. And all of those minimum densities align with the comprehensive plan recommendations. The second proposed amendment will increase the maximum density from 24 dwelling units to 40 dwelling units per acre for those HDR, high-density residential parcels. So increasing the maximum density as well as previously adding a minimum density. The third PUD amendment will be increasing the maximum height for those high-density residential HDR parcels as well, from 50 feet high to 75 feet high. So that allows approximately two additional stories in building height. So on this map, this shows the entire PUD for Turnberry. Up at the north here, these two red stars, those are high-density residential designated parcels that would... The minimum density or the maximum density would be increased to 40 dwelling units, and the maximum height would be increased to 75 feet. Then the second to the last change is regarding these blue-starred parcels right here, J and G1. So it's proposing to increase the maximum density for those two parcels up to eight dwelling units per acre. Currently, the maximum density is 5.8 for one and 4.6 for the other. So just bringing those up to a maximum of eight dwelling units per acre. And then the last change involves parcel B. But let's actually take a closer look. It's a little bit harder to read. So up here, these are the two high-density residential lots that will be increasing density and height. These are the two already plotted LDR designated sections that will be increasing to eight dwelling units per acre maximum density. These purple stars are where existing residential development is already, and this is 112th and just to the south here is 104th. So once again, the existing residential development in the purple stars, we have 104th Avenue here. These two red-starred parcels are also designated HDR, so those will also be increasing to 40 dwelling units per acre, and the maximum height will also be increasing to 75. The last amendment proposed in the PUD has to do with parcel B, which has the green star right here. It's at 104th and Revere Street. So the applicant is proposing to change this from an HDR designation to an MDR designation. So currently, the HDR designation for this parcel allows single-family development, but it limits the maximum lot size to 4,500 square feet. The applicant is interested in doing residential, single-family residential development with larger lot sizes up to 6,000 square feet, and so they're proposing to rezone that from the HDR designation to the MDR designation. Here's their concept plan for what they're going to propose in that parcel B. This plan is not final. It will go through the subdivision PUD permit process with the city to be finalized. And here's what parcel B looks like now. You can see there are existing residential dwelling units to the north of the parcel, as well as Potomac Farms to the east. So let's talk about some of the PUD approval criteria. So the proposed zone changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So staff feels like that while the specific parcel B change may not further the high-density comprehensive plan designation, that when all of these five different amendments taken together are looked at, that it does bring the entire PUD more in line with the comprehensive plan. So majority of the rest of the Turnberry development is designated residential medium, and that the proposed changes will be consistent with that. So the couple of the other approval criteria, so that this PUD proposes an improvement over street zoning, and that is true, the PUD provides much higher design standards and greater neighborhood amenities than would be achieved through street zoning. And then the PUD also is integrated and connected with adjacent development. Staff also found this true. The one issue we had was there was no direct park space available for that parcel B, so we asked them to include a private park as part of that development. So the planning commission felt that single-family detached homes are already allowed in parcel B without amendments for up to 4,500 square feet, that this parcel would be unlikely to develop at high-density residential standards as multifamily or attached product due to the construction defect law, and that the additional proposed amendments would bring the PUD further in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So in conclusion, the planning commission is recommending a favorable recommendation. They voted five to zero at the meeting on September 2nd, 2014, and staff would be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Does the council have any questions of the staff at this time? Mr. Bullock?
No.
No? Your lights on. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. If this is approved, is there a timeframe when this would start?
The applicant has submitted the PUD permit for parcel B, but nothing else has been submitted as far as those high-density residential parcels that would change or the parcels along Highway Two.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you for your presentation on this. On the Burlington Northern, it's, I think it's, well, why it says page 10, the DRH, was this originally supposed to have been the multifamily on this section, right? Was that the... What the HDR was on that?
The HDR allows for multifamily. It also allows for single-family detached homes with smaller lots.
Okay. Because it says maximum height is 75 feet, so...
Correct.
That's multifamily, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a portion of L1 and L2 for future build-out, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, if I can ask the applicant to come forward, if he has... If they have any questions for or comments for the council.
Good evening. My name's John Prestwich with PCS Group, 301 Calamass Street, number 102, 80223, Denver, Colorado. First, I wanted to thank staff. We first started talking with staff a little over a year ago about trying to come up with a solution to sort of clean up the front door to Turnberry. It's a quality community or a quality neighborhood in your community, and, you know, the high-density residential at the front door was just a real problem from the economy, and the economy stalled. And as it's getting better, we feel like we've got a great opportunity to provide another unique little neighborhood enclave at that front door to Turnberry and really clean up that entrance along 104th. And so that's really where we started speaking with staff. And the other amendments to the PUD came as a result of staff really reviewing the overall PUD and saying, look, there's an opportunity here to bring the PUD more in compliance with the comprehensive plan that was prepared after this PUD document was approved. So really, that's staff's direction. We've modified the overall PUD, and our intent is to move forward with parcel B, the single-family development area. We think it's more compatible with the adjacent residential, and we've heard through discussions with the HOA meetings that they're, you know, generally speaking, people who abut parcel B are supportive of having, you know, similar lot size and similar development to them rather than the high-density residential that was planned originally, you know, five or 10 years ago. And that's really all I have for you unless you have other questions, and we also have a representative from the ownership group here.
One comment that I have is we're seeing not just Turnberry, but several of the other developers in our area dealing with... Not only did they deal with the downturn in our land banking, a lot of these higher-density pieces, with the construction defect laws that are in place right now, and until we get those straightened out at the legislature, you're up against a rock and a hard spot with being able to ever do anything with some of that land because owner-occupied housing is just not happening anywhere from a high-density standpoint in the state of Colorado. So understandably, I get why you guys are coming forward to try to alleviate some of those pressures and still be able to continue to work on your development. I'm sure that that all plays a factor. But it's not just you guys. It's a lot of others that have come and brought that concern to our attention. We've blocked out a lot of multifamily, and unfortunately, those construction defect laws are prohibiting any owner... For-owner high-density residential product. That's all I really had. Mr. McElhany, you have something to add?
I just want to echo the mayor's comments with regard to the construction defect law. I understand obviously the implications here in the short run, but I do want to acknowledge the focus on maintaining that and looking at how to cite that within the overall PUD. I think in terms of, you know, we may not think about it all the time, and we want to see beautiful homes and neighborhoods, but at the end of the day, that diversity of housing stock is critically important. So if we imagine that day when we start to see our office parks show up and having jobs, et cetera, within the neighborhood, we need to be able to have an entire continuum of housing for folks to be able to live in. And, you know, we're seeing it already with some of the folks who are living in a neighborhood and wanting to move up or move to a different neighborhood, and so being able to have that full range of housing stock is important. Not to mention, this could be senior or, you know, adult, you know, active adult-type homes or, you know, different housing for different stages of life, and being able to have that available. So I think, I just want to acknowledge that it's clearly not an effort to try and get rid of that as a product within the portfolio. It's finding a way to placehold a piece of that so that as we all continue to lock arms on the construction defect component, you've got a place that will logically fit that at a future point in time. So I appreciate the work with staff on making sure that that's accounted for.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Have you reached out to 27J as far as adding these 66 lots? How kind of impact that's going to have on the school?
They're part of the referral process. And, you know, to be fair, we're at the PUD stage, the PUD permit process where we actually propose those 66 units is the next step in this. So they have seen it, though.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Not only that, you're reducing the density on that particular part of the development, so you're not increasing, which I don't think would have a huge impact on the district.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. McElhany?
Just to weigh in on that, and I'm sure planning can help as well, because the original PUD did call for high-density, to the mayor's point, the district is aware of all of those PUDs, and they have plenty, yeah, planning factors. So the other thing that I'm aware of, based on the work, the potential bond that may pass this fall, is that the district, should they be successful in that effort, they're going to have a new elementary school they have to plan, which is going to cause them to revisit all their attendance areas, et cetera, so it would allow them to... There's a timely opportunity to look at this here in the near term, hopefully.
All right. Seeing no one else, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask anyone in the audience if they'd like to speak to council concerning this application. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. May I ask the council if they'd like to discuss the case? Mr. McElhany? No? Anyone have discussion? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McElhany?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the findings of the planning commission for this measure.
Have a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Have a motion is second to accept the findings and recommendation of the planning commission concerning case Z 706-99-01-02-06-14. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance Z 706-99-01-02-06-14. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce, as mentioned, Z 706-99-01-02-06-14.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Have a motion is second to introduce the ordinance, the zoning ordinance. Mr. ... Mr. Gayler, want to read the title, please?
Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance approving the Burlington Northern Cutellas PUD Zone Document Amendment Number Four."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, the ordinance is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the zoning ordinance Z 91014 and resolution 2014-97. Is the staff ready to make their presentation? Okay. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. The cases before you tonight are Z-910-14 and S-620-14. The applicant is Sterling Design Associates on behalf of Wendy's International for the property located at 4851 East 60th Avenue. This is for a zone change from I3 to C3 and a final subdivision plot. First, let me give you a brief overview of the property. It is located at East 60th Avenue and Highway 85. This is currently zoned I3 and is surrounded by industrial uses to the west and commercial uses to the east. The entire area is identified for future commercial uses in the comprehensive plan. The subject property is shown here on the aerial in the red box. You can see that the area is developed commercially to the north, the south, and the east, and is developed industrially to the west. Zooming into the subject property, the existing restaurant is located near the middle of the site with access from both Dexter Street and East 60th Avenue. From Dexter Street, you can see the view of the east facade of the existing restaurant. And along East 60th Avenue is the front and side facade looking towards the restaurant. The property was originally developed in 1982 as the existing Wendy's fast-food restaurant. It was plotted and granted sign variances at that time as part of the original development and has been in operation since that time. The restaurant did undergo a remodel in 2009. The first request for you to consider tonight is the zone change from I3 to C3. This is needed because Wendy's proposes to demolish and rebuild the existing 3,000-square-foot restaurant. Any redevelopment of the site must be in compliance with the current I3 zoning because the existing restaurant use is no longer allowed in I3. It is illegal non-conforming use. The map showing the existing, or the surrounding uses and zoning from when they originally developed was in 1982. And at that time, the area was largely zoned I3 and I2 with mostly industrial uses. There's HW Moore Equipment, Uniroil Tires, various other industrial uses at this time. Revisiting the current zoning, the area to the east of Highway 85 and south of 60th Avenue have been rezoned and redeveloped for, as commercial, as commercial uses, including the Walmart, the Parkway Market Center, RBs, and McDonald's. While still zoned I3, the Walgreens to the north is also a commercial use. As shown on the proposed site plan, the proposed layout is nearly identical to the existing layout. And the, the new restaurant that's being proposed is the new modern typical, the new restaurant model for this location. A development plan is currently under review for this project. The second request before you is a final subdivision plot to consolidate the property into a single lot. As it is currently plotted, the restaurant sits on Lot 1 of the Wendy's subdivision while some parking and landscaping lies within the parcel along the northern boundary. The proposed plot will consolidate the existing lot and parcel into one single lot. This will simplify and clarify the overall plating in this general area. With regard to the zone change request, the planning commission determined that the existing use and proposed redevelopment are consistent with the comprehensive plan, that there would be no impacts to the adjacent property, public improvements, or city services. As evidenced by the 1982 and current zoning maps, the surrounding area has changed significantly since this site was first developed, and it is now in the public interest to allow the zone change to reinforce the commercial character of the redevelopment in this area. Regarding the subdivision request, the planning commission determined that the subdivision plot is consistent with the comprehensive plan, complies with the Land Development Code, and requires no changes to the existing access or site layout. Public Works also was sure to review the plot and had no objections or issues with the existing access points. As of today, staff has received one request for additional information regarding this case, which was received prior to the planning commission hearing. On September 2nd, planning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval to the city council regarding this zone change request. And at the same meeting, the planning commission also voted five to zero to recommend approval of the final subdivision plot. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Now I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions for staff. Mr. McLeDonny?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no one, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this application. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jennifer Olson. I'm here on behalf of Sterling Design Associates. I'd like to thank the staff for the excellent presentation of our project today and our proposal. As Caitlin mentioned, it's fairly straightforward. The replat is to simplify the two Wendy's properties, one parcel and one lot, into one conjoined lot. And the rezone will allow redevelopment to take place and transition the lot from illegal non-conforming I3 into this restaurant in the C3 zone. I believe Caitlin did an excellent job presenting, so I won't waste any more of your time repeating the facts, but I am available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any of the council have any questions or comments for the applicant? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for being here. Yes, I've seen this, this new type of Wendy's and it's a good-looking building. So it will look great in that location.
Thank you.
Sure.
I would just say that, given the scenario that it's all I3, the zoning makes perfect sense to get it corrected now. And we're looking forward to seeing the new, the new building go up. Seeing no other comments or questions for the applicant, thank you for coming in.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. I'd like to ask the council if they have any discussion on this application. And I'm sure Mr. McLeDonny and Mr. Bullock are waiting to provide us with a motion.
Yes.
So seeing no discussion, I'm open for a motion, Mr. McLeDonny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to accept the findings, recommendations of the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on zoning ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance Z 910-14. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Teter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance Z 910-14. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance rezoning the property located at 6001 Dexter Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning."
Thank you. All right. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance Z 910-14 introduced unanimously by council this evening. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission concerning the subdivision. Mr. Bullock?
Move to find the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on S 620-14.
Thank you. Mr. McLeDonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve findings and recommendations of the planning commission concerning the subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. McLeDonny?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Mr. Attorney, will you read the title?
Title reads, "For Resolution 2014-97, Resolution Approving Subdivision Plot in Case S-620-14."
Thank you. I have a, title's been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming in this evening. Next item on the agenda, conditional use permit CU-106-14. I'm opening the public hearing on the conditional use permit. Is staff ready to make that presentation? Go right ahead.
The next case before you this evening is case CU-106-14. The applicant is Old Dominion Freight Line requesting approval of a conditional use permit for their existing transportation terminal at 5601 Holly Street. The subject property is located west of Holly Street between 56th and 58th Avenues. It is zoned I1 and the surrounding properties are zoned I1 and I2. The entire area here is identified for future industrial distribution-type uses. The subject property was originally developed by Northwest Transport in the 1980s as a transportation terminal. As they grew, they acquired additional properties and they consolidated these in 1993 into the lot that we see today. It has been in use as a transportation terminal since that time. And Old Dominion acquired the property in 2008. According to the current standards of the Land Development Code, transportation terminals in the I1 Zone District require a conditional use permit. For existing transportation terminals such as this one, any building permit that increases the size of any structure larger than 200 square feet requires a conditional use permit. At this time, Old Dominion is proposing a 3,000-square-foot addition as an IT room to house corporate data. They are also proposing several upgrades to the existing landscaping around the site to bring the property back into compliance with previously-approved landscape plans. Those improvements are to be phased, which will be discussed in further detail a bit later in this presentation. To begin the analysis of this case, we can see from an aerial view that the surrounding area is developed industrially, which includes several other transportation terminals. The subject property is located along several major truck routes, which are shown here in red, through the city, which include Holly Street, East 56th Avenue, and East 58th Avenue. Old Dominion's truck fleet accesses the site from East 58th Avenue, which ensures minimal impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. The site is developed with an L-shaped building. The office is located at the southeast corner with the crossdock extending north towards, or extending towards the north, towards, along Holly Street, and a maintenance shop extends towards the west along East 56th Avenue. Much of the site is used for parking trailers, the majority of which occurs behind the building. Here's a view of the existing office and crossdock from the southern end of Holly Street, facing west. And these are some additional images of the crossdock a bit farther north on Holly Street. On the south side of the site is the maintenance shop along East 56th Avenue. The site plan illustrates the location of the proposed IT room addition, which is highlighted with the red box. As you can see, it's a fairly small addition in comparison to the rest of the site. Looking back at the existing view of the office, the new addition will be located just north of that building. This diagram is certainly not to scale. It's just meant to illustrate the approximate location of that proposed addition. The addition will match the exterior materials of the existing office structure, which is a silting concrete. It will also have additional landscaping installed along the east side of the site to help soften its exterior appearance along Holly Street, and this includes several planted trellises. Along with the landscaping on the east side of the addition, the first phase of landscaping includes upgrades to the existing landscape areas to the south of the office building and at the intersection of Holly Street and 58th Avenue. Condition 1 requires that Phase 1 be complete prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy for the addition. The second phase of landscaping includes upgrades to the existing landscape areas along East 58th Avenue. Conditions 2 and 3 refer to Phase 2 and require that this landscaping be installed within 18 months of the landscape plan approval. During the review process, our public works department did not have concerns with the level of truck traffic that would be expected, and other agencies' comments were sufficiently addressed by the applicant. To summarize, the planning commission determined that the subject property has been in use as a transportation terminal since the 1980s, and the existing use is compliant with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. Further, the planning commission determined that the site layout and the location of the site along major truck routes makes it an appropriate location for this existing transportation terminal. The surrounding area is also developed industrially, which includes several other transportation terminals, and there would be no undue burden imposed on the adjacent property, public improvements, or city services by the approval of this conditional use permit. As of today, staff has received no responses to public notice regarding this case. On September 2nd, 2014, planning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval to city council regarding this request. Thank you again for your consideration, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Caitlin, could you go back to the overhead, please? Okay, oh yeah, that's overhead there. Now, at the corner of 58th and Holly, I can understand putting in landscaping right there. But to put in those landscaping down 58th Avenue makes no sense to me because the only traffic that sees that is truck traffic. And I guarantee you with the D-zone, smoke and everything, you're going to put in landscaping or those boxes there and just end up watering dead plants because of, you're basically killing them from the pollution because everybody else that has tried to grow anything there, it has died. I can understand maybe bringing some landscaping over to 56th. But why we would impose on them to put landscaping along 58th where no one goes except if you're driving a truck to the other terminals that are down that street, I think it would be, and I can't say it's going to be an undue hardship on the people that are, because they have money. But it's just like throwing money away to me. Why don't we look at better areas to put the landscaping or something else besides that on 58th Avenue? I just don't understand that.
If I may?
You may.
The reason for those particular areas, they were part of a previously-approved landscape plan for this site. They've been neglected for a number of years, long before Old Dominion was the owner of this property. And so that was just part of coming back into compliance with their previous approvals.
Okay. I understand that. I worked there when it was FedEx. And it didn't make sense then. It didn't make sense when it was Northwest. So I, is there, in lieu of putting in those planners, is there a fee that we can charge or something? Because if anybody were to drive down there, you would understand why none of the companies before have complied with that landscaping planner because it doesn't make sense on that street. It would make more sense to put it on 56th, which is highly used as a, more people that actually would appreciate it on 56th than on 58th. It just, let's make sense where sense makes sense, you know? 58th does not make sense to put in landscaping boxes.
The reason that the conditions were phrased the way they were to allow those particular landscape areas to be installed within 18 months. The applicant is expecting a potential expansion on this site, and we can certainly address your concerns with this landscaping in the review of that process.
Thank you.
And I would say in response to Mr. Bullock's questions, that I would be concerned about trying to move the landscaping from one area to another just because of the utilities that are in place to serve for sprinklers or whatever. It becomes a bigger burden on the company to move it. But I would agree with him that if it could be in lieu of or go to some funds somewhere else to do something else nice, I just don't see it being a huge benefit and just something that's going to... die again. So I would agree with him there, but to move it somewhere else on the site and increase the burden of the, of the applicant, I think it is a concern of mine. Mr. Teeter.
Yes, I did look at that plot today. 56th Avenue is, there's no place up there to put landscaping, it's all concrete, but there is a few Chinese elms growing in the fence that needs to be removed, but outside of that, there's no place up there to put landscaping.
Thanks, Mr. Teeter. Anyone else? I'll invite the applicant forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Adam Maher, 708 West North Temple, Salt Lake City. I'm the development agent for Old Dominion. I think staff has done an excellent job in laying out what it is that we're hoping to do here, and I really appreciate Councilman Bullock's comments because his familiarity with the area and kind of bringing logic to the situation is a little bit new. It catches me off guard. But staff has shown a lot of flexibility with regards to the landscaping. They've helped us talk about phasing, uh, the different beds that were mentioned in the approval from back in the 80s. Not only that, but last week, we came into town and had a in-depth meeting with the planning staff about Phase 2, and they showed a lot of flexibility of kind of balancing the amount of landscaping that's being kind of shoehorned into this application, just because that's the way the code reads, and what we're going to be doing in Phase 2. So really, we're happy with the attention that staff has given us and the flexibility that they've demonstrated. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have for me, but I feel that staff's done a really good job up to this point.
Anyone have any questions on the council for the applicant? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this application? Please come forward. Need to state your name and address for the record, Guillermo.
Guillermo Serna, 14122, 202nd Place, Commerce City. Just making sure that the traffic on 60th Avenue and Holly, the routing of trucks or whatever they're gonna be putting in there, through, right around the park there, in perspective to Holly and, and 60th Avenue, making sure that heavy trucks don't go through 60th Avenue off of the Vasco's Boulevard, because sometimes when I lived there, there were big trucks that were coming through there, and there's kids that are crossing, going over to the school system, and now crossing over into the, the park. So making sure that, that trucks don't go through 60th Avenue from Vasco's Boulevard, okay, in perspective to too much traffic through there, especially big heavy trucks. And you've got the apartments right there on 60th and Holly also. That's just my concern. Just making sure that, I think there was an ordinance in there of no big trucks going through 60th Avenue in that general area.
I, I believe to my recollection, there is a sign posted at 60th and Holly, no trucks over 7,000 pounds.
Yeah, and making sure that that is enforced.
Enforced, okay.
Okay, that's all.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Serna.
All right.
Anyone else in the audience have anything they would like to add? Saying no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the council if they have any discussion. Saying none, I'm open to, uh, for a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Bullock.
Moved, uh, fi, um, the findings and facts of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'll ask the city attorney to, let me get a motion first to approve the Conditional Use Permit 106-14. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve numbers CU-106-14.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Conditional Use Permit. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, Conditional Use Permit for Transportation Terminal in Case CU-106-14.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming in this evening. Then we'll move into the next portion of our meeting, which is resolutions. We have Resolution 2014-81. I'd like to invite Maria DeAndrea, our Public Works Director, forward to address the council on this item.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening.
So tonight, we're here to talk about awarding a contract for residential garbage and recycling services within the city. This is a five-year contract that's proposed, beginning on January 1st of 2015 and going through 2019. The, overall, the program goal and objectives, I won't read that off the screen for you, but generally, because we have a program that's paid for by the city and not directly by the residents, or is not sent bills individually, our goal really is to increase recycling and reduce the amount of waste in our stream of, of garbage. To that goal, our objectives to achieving that are really to minimize the amount of waste in the waste stream through education and obviously source reduction, as well as encouraging and facilitating recycling of material, increasing the amount and types of materials that are being recycled, and overall improving education and expanding participation in our recycling programs. The process that we went through to get to a new contract recommendation was we first issued a request for proposals in late July, and we requested prices, not only on our base services, what we're currently offering to citizens, but also requested prices on various ad alternates and a bid option for fully recycling and garbage collection, fully automated, excuse me. We also asked, and again, in support of our goal and objectives, was to basically ask for different options from the vendors to see how we could increase recycling diversion rates through perhaps ideas that we hadn't contemplated. We did receive two proposals in late August, one from Republic Services and one from Waste Management. The proposals and the way that we structured this, it was not based on cost only, but on a variety of factors, including each proposer's overall work plan, their customer service plan, that is how they're going to react and respond to customers, reach out to them, as well as their education campaigns, their past and current performance through reference checks, and then the various innovations that were proposed by the contractor, again, to increase recycling, participation, and quantities. And then overall, the qualifications, the contractor's personnel and management approach. So although, again, as, as you can see, cost was a large factor, it wasn't the only factor considered. The selection committee, which was comprised of myself, Jim Hayes, our deputy city manager, and Cheryl Carstens, our interim finance director, reviewed all of the proposals, interviewed both companies, and then also reviewed a written summary of the reference responses that we received. Overall, both companies had exceptional proposals. Within them, they both had adequate to good work plans and very excellent customer service plans. References for both companies cited both high points, as well as some areas of concern. And both companies really discussed some innovative methods to increase recycling diversion rates through a variety of means, including education, outreach, workshops, et cetera. And both companies really truly have qualified staff who have managed similar programs in other communities. So with that, although I think the advantage was to, for all those factors then was relatively equal, it really did come down to cost. And so we held a study session with the city council a couple of weeks ago to discuss this, and as you can see here on the slide, what we're presenting is, you can see that as time has gone on, the costs have increased due to that adjustment that's in the current contract, but also because the number of households have increased. So we're at a point in 2015 where our current budget, we're anticipating at, at this time, a budget of $2,153,122, based on the current prices from the current contract. So that's what we'll be comparing that against in the future here. So we received prices, as I mentioned, on a variety of bid alternates, including the fully automated collection, which was that bid option that we requested. And then we received two additional options, if you will, from the proposals that enhanced the recycling diversion rate. So this slide shows all those seven options or different proposals, and the cost dollar amount on the right shows the net difference from the anticipated 2015 budget. So for example, for the base service, that the lowest price received from either of the two proposals was $63,382 less than what we're anticipating spending in 2015. So it doesn't compare the proposals to each other, it compares them to the 2015 budget. So the selection committee, based on the input from city council, again, after weighing all those other factors, is recommending that the city move forward with the fully automated collection option, the middle one there that you see, at a savings of $606,262 over the 2015 budget amount. Fully automated collection for both garbage and recycling, so just to give you a little flavor of what that means, fully automated means that it's, the, the truck is traveling through the neighborhood and actually uses an arm or a pickup, if you will, to take the container and dump it into the truck. So now, right now, our, our current service, they, one of the waste providers actually has to get out of the truck, load the containers or the bags from the, the curb line into the truck, and then move on to the next house. This automates that process for both garbage and recycling. Households would have a choice between 32, 64, or 96-gallon containers for both garbage and recycling, and they could mix and match those. So for example, a household could select a 96-gallon container for garbage and a 32-gallon container for recycling, and they would have the option of changing that once per year, once they kind of get a feel for how much garbage and recycling that they're producing. Again, with our intent through our education campaign would be to encourage people to use more and more recycling, and so go for that larger container. Waste Management would supply and deliver one of those, each containers, both a garbage and recycling container, to each existing and future household. Any additional garbage and recycling service above that would be required to be purchased directly by the customer from Waste Management, and I'll go over those costs in just a minute. We would continue to have our large item pickup for each household, which is limited to five times per year, and that basically allows a household to call in 24 hours in advance and arrange to have some, a special pickup at their home. And then, of course, trash and recycling services for all of our city facilities, which is part of our current base program. Again, just based for that fully automated collection, this just kind of does the math, it would be based on a cost of $8.89 per household per month. So again, if you recall in the first slide, we're paying roughly right now about $12.01 per month per household. So this would decrease that dramatically. And based on an assumption of 14,500 households in 2015, that would equate to a cost of $1,546,860, or again, a savings over the anticipated 2015 budget of just over $606,000. Those additional service costs, so again, if, if someone had such a volume of trash or recycling that they couldn't fit it within the 96-gallon option, they would have the option of renting or purchasing through Waste Management an additional container. So for example, the 90, the first 96-gallon would be provided by the city at no cost to the homeowner, but if an additional 96-gallon was required or requested by the homeowner, they would pay for that directly, and it would cost them $33.60 per year. So the, that cost includes the cost of the container, but that container would be rented, not owned. So if the, the homeowner left, it would have to be returned to Waste Management. Waste Management has implemented similar programs just recently, both in Roy City, Utah, as well as in Golden, Colorado, who moved to a, to a more robust system within the past year or so. Those were two of the references that we did check. They also will be, through the fully automated collection, they will be going to all compress natural gas vehicles, which would, will overall reduce greenhouse gas emissions as well as noise. They also have the ability with this, with the fully automated collection, to go to use, utilize more fully their onboard computing system. So basically, there's a barcode, if you will, on each container, which allows them to scan that so that they know the time that was picked up, and then they know that it was picked up, so that they can, at the end of the day, know if they've had any missed calls or missed service issues. As well, Waste Management is offering the city two solar trash compactor units with the contract, so that we can utilize those, try them out in one of our parks, or perhaps in our Derby District, to see how they work for us. As far as the implementation schedule, the goal is to implement this at the first of the year, which is why we're coming to you with a couple of months here to really, now it's about going to educating our citizens. So that, right now, what we've talked about with Waste Management, based on that preliminary implementation plan, would focus not only on public education, but doing workshops, looking at how the routes are structured, talking about cart delivery schedules, and overall, how, just how we roll this out to the public. We anticipate coming back to council at the end of October, at your October 27th City Council Study Session, to talk about this more fully, once we've hammered out some of the details with Waste Management. And with that, staff would recommend that you adopt Resolution Number 2014-81, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions for Maria? Mr. Bullock?
No, I'm here for a motion.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you, Maria. Um, you know, I've already got a 96-gallon container. Does that mean I can't use that? I would have, if I wanted to get two 96-gallon containers picked up at one time, I would have to rent one from Waste Management, I'd have to throw my existing one away or something? I don't.
I'm certain, certainly you could continue to use yours, or you could return it, it'd be up to you, but it would be one less that Waste Management would have to provide. So the one that they're, they will roll out to each homeowner will be not owned by you. So again, if you, if you left or moved, you would leave that with the residents and not take it with you. So it would be at your option, I guess.
What I'm saying, if I get the one from Waste Management and say, in the unusual circumstance, that I might fill it up and I need another 96-gallon container, and I put my own 96-gallon container out there, what's gonna happen?
You would be, have to be billed for that service. So they would only pick up one of those 96-gallon containers unless they had a separate contract with you for that additional container.
You'd have to have a separate contract for each individual instance?
Yeah, I guess not, a, a contract in the sense that you would have a separate service agreement with them for that additional container.
Or they would charge by the pickup, I guess. If you had one this week, but none for the next three weeks?
I, I believe it, it would only be, we'd have to look at that situation specifically, but I believe it's, it's based in a weekly pickup.
I'll call them if that becomes an issue, I guess, and try to work that out.
Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, thank Maria. Just based on what Jim was saying, just, is that what I was gonna ask? Is that something we can bring on study session to talk, because you're gonna have a lot of people within Commerce City, you're gonna have the same situation that Jim's in, and I don't think too many people are gonna give up their 96, or, you know, because it's there. Maybe something, we can discuss that at the study session. My comment would be on the two solar trash compactors. I believe with the -- our city has grown over the years. I could see if we can do several more of these solar, so just a couple. And I'd like, you know, as well, speak about that during the study session.
Yeah, the -- those two are being offered, that was not part of the request in the proposal, but they're being offered to us for free to just try them out. And then, they would, if we bought, for example, 10 of them, they would give us two additional ones for free, so.
Okay. Well, I did bring that up during the study session and to both applicants about solar trash cans. So, they said that to be part of the program and seeing it here, but I know that wasn't part of the bid, so, thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you, Maria. So, I'm kind of spinning off of what Mr. Benson said. If you have a, we'll call it a 96 gallon sidearm available trash container, and someone -- it's doesn't -- it's not labeled waste management on it or anything like that, was there any thought given to what would happen to all the excess trash containers that are going to fall by the wayside by the city or during our -- your review of your proposals?
No, that wasn't considered, but it's something that we'll certainly look into and report back at the study session as to how we deal with those.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Thanks for the presentation, and forgive me, I was absent the night of study session of this presentation, so I just have a couple of questions. Yard waste, does that just fit in your normal then trash receptor for this? Because if you cut down tree branches and they're all bundled up, do you just put those in the can with this service?
Yes, that would be the plan right now. We -- waste management also does have facilities available that where you can take those branches, although it would be a separate -- you'd have to take them there separately to their facilities, or you could arrange for one of your large item pickups if they didn't happen to fit within your container.
Okay. And then, the next question was on the large item. It says five times a year. Is that one item five times a year or five pickups so you could have a water softener and tree branches on one day?
That's correct. So, five pickups is not five items, but five times that they come to your house with a reasonable amount of large items.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, back to Mr. Benson's concerns. I currently own three 96 gallon containers. I would just pay the $33 a year per container to be able to be provided the service to pick up all three, or the free one plus the extras that I have, if I wanted to do so, correct?
Yes.
I'm saying that for the residents.
Sure. So, if you had, you would receive one 96 gallon container for garbage, if how, depending on the amount that you generate, you would have to pay for those additional services. So, in your example, if you had two additional 96 gallon containers, you'd have to pay two times the 33.60 per year.
Gotcha. All right. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments concerning this contract? Seeing no one, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the resolution. Councilwoman Carson?
Move to approve resolution 2014-81.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor -- city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Approving An Agreement Between The City of Commerce City And Waste Management Of Colorado Inc. For Residential Garbage And Recycling Services."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll move on to resolution 2014-95. Now, I'll invite the Parks Rec and Golf Director, Carolyn Keith, forward to address the council on this issue.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, I'm here this evening to present to you information on the outdoor leisure pool. As you will recall, we met on September 30th to bring additional information to city council when considering resolution 2014-95, the construction contract for the outdoor leisure pool at Pioneer Park. The purpose of our presentation on the 30th was to provide city council with an overview of the process taken to receive construction bids and make a recommendation for a council award. Additionally, we provided information that demonstrated that staff did follow the contracting process in compliance with the procurement policy adopted by city council in April of this year. We talked a little bit about the procurement policy requirements and the reason for bringing this construction contract award to city council. It is in excess of $250,000, which requires city council authorization. We talked a little bit about the procurement policy and the role of city council and our staff. It was at this time that we shared with you the overall view regarding the outdoor leisure pool project budget. In the November election, our residents approved funding that we talked about in the amount of $10 million in total for the budget. We had the 9% for the program reserve and program management. We have the design, design contingency, construction, construction contingency, other costs, and our project level contingencies were all identified in what we refer to as the initial project budget of $9.1 million. An overview of the design and bidding, in April of 2014, we entered into a contract with Olson-Lavois for the design of the outdoor leisure pool. We entered into public engagement in May and June of this year, creating our conceptual design, which we presented to council on June 16th. At that time, we had 50% of our construction documents complete, well, shortly after that, on June 7th. At that time, we did some value engineering regarding the project, and in August, we were at our 100% construction drawings, which took us to moving forward with our RFP for construction. I did want to share that during the public input meetings, we received feedback from council as well as the general public about some additional pieces that they would like to see in the concept plan. We had the addition of a restroom, widening of the stairwell for the tower and a speed slide, the kiddie pool. We made some changes in the bath house. All of those had an impact on our construction budget when we went out to bid. We did go out to -- we had a pre-advertising for the RFP in July of this year. Our bid documents were issued in August. The documents did indicate a cost, construction cost range for the base bid of 5.75 to 6.25 million. We had some required qualifications for any contractor submitting bids. Those included construction experience, both the staff and the firm. They needed to be able to meet our bonding and insurance requirements. We also were looking for experience with building leisure pools, as well as similar project experience and references here in the metro area or in other parts of the country. On September 8th, we had a public bid opening. We received five bids. At that time, all bids were read aloud, as this was a hard bid process. The bid result analysis took place September 8th through the 9th. We did come to city council last Monday, September 29th, with a recommendation, and it was at that time there was a request for additional information, which led us to the Tuesday, September 23rd study session. We did share, and I realize this is rather difficult to read on the screen, but a summary of the five contractors for their base bids, as well as their prices for all six alternates and the totals there. GTC had met the basic requirements as well as the low bid. Therefore, staff had recommended GTC as the award for the general contractor. We spent a little bit of time talking about the budget for the pool. I had shared with you the initial budget, which was put together prior to having the information that we had at 100% construction drawings. Therefore, our design is complete, and you can see the cost of that. We reduced the design contingency since we have completed our design and moved that into the construction costs, construction portion of the budget. As you can see, we had just under $6.3 million estimated for the base bid for the outdoor leisure pool, and GTC, their base bid came in just a little over $6.3 million. When we added the alternates of $854,000, the construction budget went to just under $7.2 million. We are retaining a portion of the construction contingency budget at 3% in industry standard that we feel comfortable at this point with where we're at with the design and being able to accept all of our alternates in the initial construction contract. We have our other costs that include the project management permitting, fees, technology, our furniture fixtures and equipment, public art of just a little over $1.2 million. We're not making any changes in those at this time. And we have moved what we refer to as the project level contingency into the construction budget, allowing for us to award the contract of just under $7.2 million or $7,189,041 to be exact. As you can see, as we moved some of the line items up and down according to the construction bid and the alternates, we are still well within the $9.1 million allowed for the construction of the -- the design and construction of the outdoor pool. We talked a little bit about our proposed schedule. We anticipate execution of the contract here in the next week, hopefully following the award recommendation and approval this evening. Anticipating mobilization onsite by mid-October. We initially were looking at a mid-October groundbreaking date. However, at this point, we have in communications is working with October 23rd at 10:00 a.m. And then, we are looking at a 35-week duration for construction and hoping to open the outdoor pool in by mid-June or summer of 2015. Our next steps, we would be looking to council recommending authorization of the award to GTC, resolution 2014-95. We would then be issuing official notice to proceed to GTC effective tomorrow. We have announced the naming contest for the pool, which will take place October 1st through November 7th. We talked a little bit about the groundbreaking. We'll be discussing with city council at an upcoming study session, fees and charges for the pool, and then again, looking forward to that opening in the summer of 2015. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thanks, Carolyn. Does the council have any questions for Carolyn Keith at this time? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution? State your name and address for the record, please.
Guillermo Center, now 14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. Just one question on the idea that the mayor had as far as the grass and how that would be distributed, and if that would still be available to the public, or is that off the table?
You know, Guillermo, I'll talk to that for a minute. I went back to Rotary International Rotary, Commerce City Rotary Club to see if they could partner with the city to help make that happen. Also was in contact with Don Schloop, who owns Scientology Sod Farms, to see if he could come and cut it to save some money and do it as a Rotary project in conjunction with the city, to be able to give that sod back to our residents. The problem is, Mr. Schloop went on vacation and was out of town, still is out of town, expected back this week, and if there was any way possible to make it happen, I would love to do that. But you can see, based on this groundbreaking, I don't know if we have that window, but I did everything I could up to this point to try to get that done. And if it's still possible, when Mr. Schloop gets back, if he can mobilize a sod-cutting tractor out there and cut it, I would be glad to have the Rotary out there to do the sod giveaway. That's what my intention was. Problem is, with vacations and everything else that took place, I don't -- I don't know if it would, if it's a reality at this point in time, but if it could happen, I would love to make it happen.
Okay. Just the question, and the other is, thank you for speeding it up instead of a month, one week. So, I think that's appreciated by the community, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Guillermo.
Thank you.
Mr. McAldonny?
I --
Before we do, I want to make sure, did you have comments, Mr.?
No, not for Mr. --
Guillermo, I want to make sure that we don't have anyone else that would like to speak from the audience towards this resolution. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, Mr. McAldonny?
Okay to make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. I just wanted to acknowledge staff and the extra work staff did to pull together what was information that you guys had, but to effectively repackage that information, not only for the study session, but for tonight, I think certainly from comments from both council and community, and given that this is really the first of our 2K projects that are at this stage, aside from Frontier or the Frontera Park, this is a big invisible project. And certainly, there is a long history and a long anticipation to see this project come to fruition. And I think Parks and Rec really set a great example with the information they put together for us to help provide that refresher on the steps that had been taken to get to this point and the decision-making process and why we've gotten to where we are and why that's a good thing and where we've sort of seen, you know, things go up or things go down. And again, for all of us to be able to understand those elements, be able to speak to those, speak to our citizens about those things, and again, I think this is a great example that can now be used for each of our subsequent 2K and beyond projects to help ensure that our community understands that decision-making process and appreciates all the hard work that staff is doing to make these things happen. So, thank you once again.
Any other discussion from the council before I ask for a motion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I want to echo what Councilman McAldonny was saying. Last week, I did ask, and Mr. Benson put a motion forward to have that, for our citizens to know that we take everything in front of us very serious and making sure we have all the information before we go ahead and okay any of these projects. So, again, I want to thank staff and council for the short 24 hours last Tuesday for that meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve resolution 2014 -- I mean, 2014-95 authorizing construction of the outdoor leisure pool.
Mr. McAldonny?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2014-95. City attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Authorizing Award of Contract For The Construction Of An Outdoor Leisure Pool At Pioneer Park."
Thank you. Title's been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Move on to ordinances on first reading. We start with ordinance 2031. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Douglas?
I have a comment on our resolution, the third one, maybe that's a typo in there, resolution 2014-97. I think it's a repeat from what's supposed to have been up only in the public hearing portion. in the public hearing part, portion, just for our, our minutes, because it's on our agenda.
We amended the agenda to move it.
Oh, okay, okay, got you, okay.
That's why you're seeing it twice.
My, I'm sorry, thank you.
Are you good, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah.
All right. On to 20, ordinance 2031.
Thank you.
I'm open for, I'm asking the council if they have any questions regarding the ordinance, and I've got some lights lit up here. McAdonie, Bullock, I'm assuming you want to make a motion?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions concerning the ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to address the council on this ordinance? Saying none. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce ordinance 2031.
Thank you, Mr. McAdonie.
Second.
I have a motion as second to introduce ordinance 2031. Mr. Attorney.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2014 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the Recognition of the Tony Gramps Youth Services Grant Funds in the Amount of $79,119 for the Support of Youth Marijuana Use Prevention and the Authorization of the Expenditure thereof."
Thank you. I'll open up for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the ordinance is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. We'll move to ordinance 2033. Anyone, anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one. Does council have any comments or questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none?
Yes.
Yes, I didn't have your light here. Mr. Benson.
You don't? Oh. Well, this was the, the $444,000 that we got from Dr. Cog, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Benson.
So what is, what's the reason for this ordinance?
The, the way the, the ordinance is written is, we actually realized the funds in our budget, and they're actually a direct grant to RTD, so we have a local match that we're providing, but we inappropriately recognize these funds, and so these are to repeal a prior ordinance.
The money went directly to RTD.
Correct.
Never came through us. Okay, I got you. I would, I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay. Mr. McAdonie.
No questions, sir.
Okay, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Benson.
Move for the adoption of, well, approval on first reading of ordinance 2033.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion as second to introduce ordinance 2033. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance 1945 to Remove From the 2013 Budget of the City of Commerce City the Recognition of the RTD Bus Route Grant Funds in the Amount of $444,000 for the Support of a North Area Express Bus Route."
Thank you. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2033 is introduced unanimously by council this evening. Now we'll move into the presentation portion of our meeting. We have the I-70 East Supplement Draft Environmental Impact Study. I'd invite the RTD representatives forward to make their presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Rebecca White. I work in the Policy Office of the Colorado Department of Transportation, and I'm joined tonight by Keith Stefanik, who's one of the lead engineers on the I-70 East project. He's here to help me in case you have any really tough questions. So we've been studying the I-70 East corridor at CDOT for 11 years. That means that Commerce City has been with us on this process also for 11 years. Very much appreciate the partnership and the ups and downs we've had with different ideas that's gotten us to this point, but I'm here tonight to say we're getting a bit closer. We've got some key progress going on two separate tracks. One is the recent issuance of a supplemental draft environmental impact statement. That is a key milestone for us in moving the study towards completion, and at the same time, we're making progress in figuring out how at CDOT we're going to pay for this project, which at a one-plus-billion-dollar price tag is obviously a key challenge. So like I said, issuance of the supplemental draft was a pretty big deal for us. We issued that document on August 29th. It's out for about a 60-day review to October 31st. One major feature of this new document is bringing in the new alternative that you're all very familiar with, I'll talk a bit more on that in a moment, which is removing the viaduct and lowering the highway. But because our last draft study was issued in 2008, a lot of the data was old, so we were able to go back into the study and update the noise, the air quality, the traffic modeling, all that key analysis is sort of a backbone of a study like this. So that's all updated, and then we were able to bring in the new alternative. And there it is. We call this the partial-covered lowered alternative, and as council knows, we've spent the majority of our 11-year process really focusing on this two-mile stretch of what is a 12-mile corridor for CDOT. The study stretches from Brighton all the way out to Tower Road, but this 1.8 miles of the viaduct has been the, the part of the project that has been hardest for us. This part of the interstate cuts right through a, a neighborhood and has had all sorts of challenges also with the school. So coming up with this concept was really the first time in our 11 years we've had an idea, an alternative that had any sort of support from the community and the local municipalities. What this alternative would do would remove that two-mile viaduct, place the interstate below ground between Colorado Boulevard and Brighton Boulevard, and place about a four-acre landscaped cover over the top. So that is the major alternative we've released in this study. There are, of course, a lot of devil in the details, including different options for the access at Steel Vasquez, but I do want to make it clear that the conversations on the table now are all about access at Steel Vasquez and really the pros and cons of a roundabout versus signalized intersection there. So there's three alternatives in the document. We can't just analyze one. The first is no action. The no-action concept for CDOT on this project is a little bit different, because usually in a study, no action means do nothing, but because we have a 50-year-old bridge, we can't do nothing on this corridor, so no action is actually rebuilding the viaduct. We'd add standard shoulders instead of those narrow, thick shoulders you see out there today, and modern lane widths. This would be about a $500, $600 million effort in of itself. It would add no additional lanes, though. This would just rebuild the structure. The second alternative that we'll still have in the document is rebuilding the viaduct with either a north shift, which would impact Swansea Elementary School, or a south shift towards the Purina Plant, so both of those alternatives are in there. This would add two additional express toll lanes in each direction for that entire 12-mile stretch of the project. And then the third alternative I just touched on, of course, is the partial-covered lowered alternative. Also includes the addition of two additional express toll lanes in each direction. So major milestone for us to have gotten this document out, but as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot, a lot of details we still need to work out. We've had a lot of good progress on conversations around Steel Vasquez, and so that conversation really now is between the signalized intersection versus a roundabout. More conversations on the cover, what is that space for, what would the community like to see there? Can that cover be any, any longer? There's, that involves a lot of air quality analysis and other analysis. City of Denver is interested in the possibility of a second cover, so that, there's some discussions we still need to have on that. The frontage roads, the 46th Avenue frontage road, where there are one-way and two-way, and then opportunities for north-south connectivity. It's particularly important when you're lowering a highway that you, people are very interested in what streets cross over. So those are some of the issues that we'll be working on over the next couple of years as we continue on the study. And then the other piece is the financing. We're sort of fortunate in this project. Usually, we do a study, we issue a record of decision, and then we pause for a while while we try to figure out how to fund it. But because we have a clock ticking on the viaduct, we have a, a pretty big incentive to try to address this project as soon as we can, and in fact, the major source of funding for this project comes from the Bridge Enterprise revenues. Those are funded by the Faster Program, which was the 2009 legislation that increased vehicle registration fees. So right now, we're looking at pulling about $850 million from the Faster Bridge Program. This is limited, of course, to the viaduct portion of the project. That's where the biggest price tag is, but those funds can only be used to address the viaduct. We did receive a $50 million commitment from Dr. Cog, and those will be federal funds that come through Dr. Cog. And then the third source of funding we're looking at is from Senate Bill 228. So these are funds from the legislature. This is a, a five-year source of revenue that turns on when, I believe it's personal income growth reaches 5% or more for a certain time. We get about $200 million a year for a five-year period, and so we're looking at pulling a chunk of money from that. Senate Bill 228 funds, however, are subject to Tabor refunds. So that is our, right now, our potential funding plan for this project. That adds up to about $1 to $1.2 billion, depending on the 228 funds. The entire project itself is $1.8 billion. There's no way we're going to be able to do that, so we're trying to achieve a project somewhere around the billion to 1.2 range. And then the other key question is what procurement method we choose to do this. We learned a pretty big lesson on the US-36 project. You might have seen some of the media on that. That was a public-private partnership, and there was a lot of community concern at the, sort of, the end of that. So right now, we're at the very early stages with I-70 East, but we're already going out to the public with this question of should we do a design-build, which is CDOT's traditional way of approaching these projects, or should we do a public-private partnership? Right now, the staff is, is sort of identifying a quote-unquote preferred alternative, to use NEPA language, for a public-private partnership, but we're seeking community input. We went out in June and July of this year and held, we've been holding a telephone town hall back-to-back with an in-person meeting, so we did that in June and July, and we'll be doing it again here in just a few days as we get closer to this stage of issuing a request for qualifications. So on October 16th, there'll be a telephone town hall, and then on November 5th, we'll have another in-person meeting, and really, we'll be seeking input on what the community thinks of the pros and cons of a public-private partnership versus design-build. And then we'll do it a third time as we get closer to a request for proposals. And then the last issue is what can we build with that $1 to $1.2 billion? Right now, our base project, the minimum we want to achieve really is addressing that viaduct portion, but getting out to I-270. So that's an important goal for us. If we can stretch, if a public-private partnership allows us to stretch more, or the 228 monies come through, we'd like to get the project out to I-225. That second bullet there is actually a typo. We'd like to get to I-225. That would probably be a very minimal widening that would allow us to add in one additional lane, and then if we can achieve that, we'd like to do a direct connect to I-225. So in the coming months, we'll be working with industry through the RFQ and RFP process to figure out with the bucket of money CDOT has, how much can we achieve? And then the last issue is our schedule. So the comment period closes on, on Halloween, as I mentioned. We'd like, assuming our commission decides to continue to go forward with the project, we'd issue an RFQ in December of this year, and then the RFP would be out in the spring of next year. Next summer will be a big summer for us. We'd like to finalize the environmental impact statement that will officially identify the preferred alternative if, if we end up there, so it'll choose a preferred alternative. We'd get an RFP out at the same time, go to record of decision, and then hopefully go to construction in late 2016, be a four-to-five-year construction window. Well, that is a quick overview. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Yes, thank you very much for, for coming in, and the part on there where it said widening of I-270, I know it was a typo, but we were all getting pretty excited.
Reaching 270, yeah.
That leads into my first comment. Construction to start in 2016, late 2015. One of the things that are concerned to, to me about 270 coming through Commerce City, we know when construction starts on the I-70 corridor, we're going to take an abundant amount of traffic, additional traffic on 270. With that said, 270 is in terrible condition, and I would hope that we could get some serious maintenance on 270 before the construction would start on I-70 to help just with some of the major chuck holes and, and the problems that are already there, and, and we know, and you, you are very well aware, that 270 at 5:00 in the afternoon, for this matter, at 3:30, 4:00 in the afternoon, becomes a parking lot. And so, so we know there's going to have to be some, something done to help with 270 in the interim while I-70 is being constructed. So I would, I would tell you that, that's, that's big on, on my agenda to have, to take on that additional traffic, that at least it's, it's drivable. Right now, there's, there's so many potholes and, and it's in disrepair that, that I would love to see some maintenance before we add any additional traffic from the construction of I-70. I'm really glad you got the EIS out. Hopefully, this totally stops the, the rumor of, you know, rebuilding I-70 onto 270, and, you know, we fought that for 10 years, and we're glad you have the study out, not showing that as an alternative, because that drove us crazy for 10 years, and, and so we're, we're really happy that, that you got the study out, but 270's still a concern for the additional traffic and, and the condition that it's in today for that additional traffic. And now I'm going to turn it over to my council to have any comments or questions. Mr. Benson.
Thank you. Thank you for being here for your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I would agree with just about everything that the mayor said. My, my concern was 270, and he's correct in that, once this construction starts, 270 is impossible right now. What plans does CDOT have to alleviate the problem that's going to occur when you're starting to shut traffic off of I-70 onto 270? Because I'm, it's impossible now, if you've ever been out there. What happens when you say, add 50% to the traffic?
But I certainly-
There's got to be some consideration given to that.
Yeah, I, I definitely understand the concern. To start off, the construction plan we're envisioning for I-70 right now would maintain six lanes in each, three lanes in each direction, so we would maintain the template we have out there today, how the construction would likely occur, and this is open to innovation from the contractor, but we would dig the lowered portion of the highway to the north of where the viaduct is now, leave the viaduct up, move traffic down to the lowered, all the traffic, and then take the viaduct down and dig the remainder. So that isn't to say, though, that I-270 won't have some impacts. I am glad that the 2040 Long Range Plan does include improvements to I-270. Of course, another critical next step is doing that sort of, that study work that we've been able to do for I-70 East on I-270. We've been having a lot of discussions with your staff about how to do that. Unfortunately, we didn't get the Tiger Grant that we jointly submitted for, so we need to keep figuring out a way that we can work towards getting the study done, as that really will be the next step. But this is an issue we will flag for the contractor as well. If there's any innovative ideas out there, we'll bring them to you during the construction window, but I, like I said, I do understand the concern.
And is there, you know, other than the impact that this project will have on 270, what is the general plan for 270?
Uh, well, so the general plan and for the, in the 2040 Long Range Plan would be to add one additional lane in each direction, is sort of the thinking, that that's the additional capacity that's needed. capacity that's needed.
That's not going to be enough. I mean, if we're talking about 2040, you might need three more lanes in each direction.
Yeah, there's a lot of growth.
It's 25 years from now. Anyway, I'll be, I'm not even going to be here in 25 years. I'm not going to worry about it.
Never know with technology today, Jim. You might be around.
No, I don't, anyway. College football will be disappeared by that time. Anyway, thank you for coming here.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Give us some information. We're all looking forward to the E-470 reconstruction.
I-70. Mr. Bullock?
I'm sorry, I'm on the board at E-470, so I have it on my mind.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes. When we were at the different meetings on the EIS, it was brought to our attention that the partial lower cover, icing on either side of the partial lower cover because of shading from the, and I brought back memories of the airport tunnels and how we had difficulties with the shading on the airport tunnels and icing on either end, either in the morning or in the evening after a snowstorm, because of the fact that, what has, what's been put into the new technology that we're going to use to combat this shading and icing on either end of the, if the partial lower cover is the one that is accepted?
Well, that's, it's a good question. I can't say that we have any new technology. Obviously, it'll depend on CDOT's ability to maintain that highway and get out there with our sanding trucks. These, this lowered section with the cover, it'll be quite a bit different than the tunnels out by the airport. Those were very narrow, were quite a bit, yeah, narrower and shorter. So I think this'll be, it'll be quite a bit different project than that. I don't know, Keith, you have any?
Good evening, council. Let's say on a, you know, to follow up that question, she definitely, Rebecca did a good job on the increased shoulders. We'll have 12-foot inside and 12-foot outside shoulders, both eastbound and westbound. So the tunnel effect, if you want to call that, on the slowing of traffic, that should help the traffic out a lot better. And then also the shading with the 12-foot inside and 12-foot outside, especially the 12-foot outside shoulders, that'll bring those travel lanes away from those walls, and then allow our maintenance forces to hit that better with the, with the, the micloride, et cetera. So we will develop a good maintenance plan to make sure that that icing does not occur around those shaded areas or approaching or exiting the cover area.
So there's no way that they can put heat coils that extend out from the tunnel on either end, where it makes sure that the snow melts and it doesn't ice up, that it just, during storms like that, it, 100 yards on either end of it to keep it melted?
Oh, yes, there's technology out there for that. So if we, you know, during the preliminary design, final design, if it's, if it is deemed necessary for those, for that kind of a device, we would consider that. At this time, we don't believe that's needed. But yes, that is used commonly throughout some of the, some of the colder climates. Some of our tunnels up in the, in the mountain regions have some heat tape, we call that, on the outside of the portals as you're approaching those. So it is used. We don't have that in the design right now, as we are in the, in the NEPA phase of this. We haven't begun our detailed engineering for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you very much for being here tonight. On this partial covered section of, if, if it goes to that third option, is Denver going to be responsible for that partial cover, not CDOT?
The maintenance of the cover?
No, as far as the cost of construction.
No, that, that's part of the CDOT responsibility to pay for the construction of that.
Okay.
In fact, that's one of the mitigations of the project.
Uh-huh, okay. And the other thing, too, I know we have the annual bridge enterprise revenue. Is that a collection from the state, or is that just a portion from Denver, just in the area that's being impacted, that you use those annual bridge fees?
Those are statewide revenues. It's about $100 million a year.
$100 million a year, okay.
Yep.
And so, you're saying right now, over time, built up $850, or right now, in the coffers, how much is there?
Well, we do not have $850 million sitting there, so we'll be looking at, if we went with a design-build, likely a bond issuance.
Okay.
If we go with a public-private partnership, that'll be based on the long-term availability payments. So we'll be essentially making an annual payment over about a 30-year timeframe.
I see. So based on this analysis here, with the annual bridge enterprise revenue, with all the other construction going on in Colorado, how much of that will be funded towards this project over time?
Part of that depends on whether we choose this, the impact is whether we choose a design-build or public-private partnership.
Okay.
Our commission, though, has made a very strong point, that we have to maintain a viable bridge enterprise program regardless of the impact of this project. So we'd be looking at up to 50% of revenues. But that, of course, again, depends on what procurement method we choose.
Right.
Another point on that, this is the, the viaduct is the last of the 30 worst bridges that were identified statewide following the passage of the bridge legislation. So this is the last one hanging out there.
Okay.
We've known it's been coming for a while, but it does, it's a large price tag.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you. Couple of clarifications. On the clarification where it says, you elaborated there was a error, construct eastbound I-270 to eastbound I-70 flyover. What is that supposed to be, one more time?
Actually, I was pointing to the second bullet there, where it says extended project. It should say extended project to I-225. And that just means extending the express toll lane we'd like to get to I-225.
Okay, so we, like, there's another question. Where does the viaduct start, and where does it end?
About, well, so the viaduct starts closer to I-25, and that portion's already been rebuilt. So if you're there by the Denver Coliseum, that's also a viaduct. But that CDOT did a number of years ago. So the viaduct in the study starts at Brighton Boulevard and goes to about Colorado.
Very good. So we heard that there could potentially be a funding shortage, and if the scope of work is worded that, it would be for the viaduct, and there could be some impacts to diverting traffic to 270 at some point. And if the project does only fund the viaduct piece, I think there is going to be some impacts to the surrounding residents, especially in Commerce City. And so, another concern that I have is, there should be some evaluation of if Colorado Boulevard could handle full movement intersections in there, and where are we at with that?
So I will ask Keith to help me here, but on your point, we do agree that it makes a lot more sense to do more than a 1.8-mile project. So we're doing everything we can to stretch this project beyond the viaduct to I-270. Couple different options on Colorado Boulevard.
So the, the partial covered lowered alternative that's identified in the supplemental draft, it has two versions. First is the basic PCL, which has a split interchange, a half, half an interchange on the west side of Steel Vasquez, and a half interchange on the east side of Colorado, with a frontage road system working in between those interchanges to act as a full interchange. The other option is the modified PCL, which has no access to Steel Vasquez and has a full interchange at Colorado. We have been working, you know, with, with the, with the public, with the stakeholders at our, you know, at our public meetings, our weekly, or our monthly community leaders meetings, and we've heard a lot of vocal stakeholders and residents about maintaining access to Steel Vasquez. So right now, we are taking a look at that basic PCL option to make sure that that half interchange can, can remain with that frontage road system. So as, as it would regard to a full interchange at Colorado and a half interchange at, at Steel Vasquez, the proximity of those interchanges are too close together to meet current standards for the weave lengths in between there. So that's why we are looking at a half interchange at Steel and a half interchange at Colorado, so that the interstate functions in a, a acceptable operating service.
Very good, thank you.
All right.
Neither was a region I brought the engineer. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
One of the alternatives was full interchange at Vasquez or roundabout. How big of a roundabout would we be talking about to successfully move trucks through that intersection without them having to stop? And especially when we get to a lot of semis that are pulling three. You know, I, I, I'm trying to wrap my head around a roundabout, because a lot of the traffic that comes from the north uses Vasquez to get onto I-70 now, and I, and in both directions, east and west, and I'm trying to think, what kind of design would you have to do to that intersection in order to put a roundabout in there? And especially when you look at the partial lower cover, how it would fit, because that partial lower cover, how far east will it extend from, because I see where Swansea is there, but I see it extends way past that, and it looks like it extends almost to Vasquez. So how far is that partial lower cover extending, and how big of a roundabout would you be talking about instead of a full access intersection?
Sure, so Keith, come on out. So that, that cover there is about, it's from Columbine to Clayton Streets. It's about 800 and 900 feet, depending on if you include the streets. I'm going to handle the rest.
Yeah, so, like Rebecca said, that alternative right there, if you include the streets, you're just, you're just approaching 900 feet. So that leaves, if you, you end the partial, well, if you end the cover at Columbine Street there, that leaves, you know, adequate distance to get a ramp from Steel, Steel Vasquez down, if you were traveling from, say, southbound Vasquez to westbound I-70. That does leave us substantial room for, you know, the vertical profile to get the ramp down in there, whether it's a roundabout intersection or a signalized intersection. Both alternatives work.
Columbine? Columbine, Elizabeth, Clayton. That's three blocks? That's, that's all this partial cover is going to?
It's between Clayton and Columbine, yes.
Okay, and on the partial cover, how much northwest coverage would you, I mean, do you have access going across the coverage, or no northwest coverage on that?
Yeah, the northwest cover would be on the, on the west side, that would be, I believe it's Clayton Street.
That, the west side would be Columbine, and the east side would be Clayton.
Yeah, that's, that would be your, your vehicle access across the cover. The rest of the cover would be accessible at certain locations for pedestrians, for multimodal. We would not have it just completely open so a, you know, a user of the park could just walk across 46. We'd have some type of a, a boundary fence up there to prevent, you know, if it is a cover with active use, we don't want recreational, the kids kicking the balls out, and stuff like that. So we will have a perimeter around there. But we will have access points across 46 for pedestrians and multimodal, multimodal use.
Okay, so evidently, this partial cover isn't drawn, because it looks a lot longer than three blocks. In this picture, when you look at all the north-south streets that are on it, especially when you look at where Swansea is on it, and...
Looks like three blocks to me, Mr. Bullock.
Okay, I'll go with three blocks, but that is...
All right. Are you, any more discussion?
I'm done, thank you.
You're done? Anyone else? I do have to, before I let you go walk away, I do have to tell you that the access to I-70 off of Vasquez Steel is very important to all of the industry that Commerce City has. It's, it's our primary access for our industrial residents of this community. And I know you've heard it before from Maria and anybody else that, that has carried our messages. We're, we're very concerned about that Steel Vasquez access to I-70, because to take the truck traffic that comes out of this industrial community and try to route it to Colorado, I think would play havoc on every other street to the west to try to get that traffic through. You heard us today with a conditional use permit to expand Old Dominion. And so, it's, it's a viable part of our community to have that access at Vasquez, because I don't see Colorado as being a viable alternative for the type of industrial uses and truck traffic that'll come out of this community that is used to taking that Vasquez access to I-70. So I couldn't let you leave without giving you, giving you that to go on.
We appreciate your input.
Yep, well, we're very happy about the EIS. You just keep those accesses in place on Vasquez, and, and help us out with I-270, so that we don't have people breaking off axles in the potholes, and make it to where, where it fits for the construction, and, and we're good to go. All right?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming in. One, two, three. This one don't count, Renee.
I'm on my side. One, two, three, four.
No, no, that's, no, you...
This is a street.
It's not a block. It's a half-block. Three blocks. Not through, not streets, it's blocks. Did you? We're going to have to take him to school after the meeting. All right, next item on the agenda is administrative council business. And I will start with the need to call a special meeting on October 13th. In addition to the regularly scheduled meetings, I need a motion to call the special meeting. Mr. Bullock?
Move.
So move. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to call a special meeting on October 13th, in addition to the other regularly scheduled meetings.
Mr. Mayor, if we could add, add to that motion the time 6:30?
Six thirty.
Because we have a study session scheduled at 6:00.
At 6:00. So... We want a special meeting at 6:30, and it's to take care of some of the planning for the golf course. Would you explain it real quick, Jim?
Yeah, it's for instructing negotiators for parks recreation projects.
Perfect, thank you. So is that acceptable to motion maker to add the time at 6:30? Mr. Bullock? Yes. And Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second to add the special meeting to start at 6:30 on the 13th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, is there any other additional administrative council business to come before the council this evening?
Yes.
All right. Light your light up there, Councilwoman Elliott. All right, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, we have a moratorium right now on recreational marijuana to not sell it in Commerce City. I would like to, in that ordinance, to lift out the part that it can be grown here, it just can't be sowed here right now, according to the moratorium. Because it's just something I would like to have taken out of that ordinance.
You making a motion?
Yes, well, yeah, that's, I make a motion to have that changed out of the moratorium, to have it removed from the moratorium, to allow the growing of recreational marijuana in the city, because we do allow the growing of medicinal.
Mr. Benson seconded. I have a motion and a second on the floor to remove the growing portion of the moratorium for recreational marijuana to be...
for recreational marijuana to be removed out of the moratorium. Is there any discussion?
Oh, this is just commercial growing because anybody can grow it now anyway in the city.
I got you. Is there any discussion? I've got lights lit up here for additional administrative council business? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
I think it's Mr. Amador. Mr. Amador. I'm looking for hands because I've got enough lit up over here. Mr. Amador.
I think there needs to be a distinction in the motion. First of all, there's the grow portion of growing marijuana, and then there's two additional items. One would be for recreational distribution and medical distribution. So I think we need to distinguish what the motion is because it sounded like we made a motion to grow commercial and distribute recreation, and so I'm unclear with where we're at with this. Maybe the city attorney could lead this a little bit?
I could ask the motion maker to clarify his motion.
Or the other alternative is we have a study session so that staff has some input for your consideration.
Okay, what my consideration is, under amendment six, the amendment that was just passed, anybody can grow marijuana in this city that wants to. It's three, six plants per adult, per household over the age of 18. So we are not limiting anybody from growing marijuana for recreational use in this city. So what I was making a motion is for commercial recreational use growing. We have it for medicinal growing. Why are we having, we don't sell recreational marijuana in the city. Why are we putting the moratorium on them growing it if it's not going to be sold in our city and it's going to be sold outside our city? What is the purpose when we can do it anyway? Why is that part of the moratorium on it when we can do it, grow it, and sell it anyway as citizens? So what I'm saying is, why would we limit a commercial grower from doing it in our city? That is my motion, you know? What are we stopping?
From my perspective, I haven't had a chance to study the ordinance because we didn't discuss this before tonight's meeting. I mean, you didn't mention it to me, so I haven't looked at that ordinance to really be able to adequately advise you on the distinctions and what's allowed and what's not allowed. That's why I was suggesting that at least you consider having an opportunity to discuss it in the study session is a possibility. Because I really can't advise you thoroughly on this tonight.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I have a comment for distinction. Did that clarify your concerns, Mr. Amador?
Not really. So is it possible to make an alternative motion for a study session?
Can I withdraw my motion? And then we get the, when, where is the study session?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bullock, I think, I have a couple of questions, I think, regarding the substance of your motion versus the procedure. Because if I understand the way this was adopted, it was an ordinance, and we would need to take some kind of public notice to repeal the ordinance. So we could look at a schedule for that, and then we could insert a study session in between there to talk about the substance of the issue. But I think, I defer to Mr. Gaylor on that.
It's an ordinance that we're talking about.
The moratorium is an ordinance?
You need an ordinance to amend an ordinance, right, so...
All right, so that's what I needed. Mr. Bullock, are you withdrawing your motion?
Yes, but I was also asking, when is the study session? When is, as soon as we can have the study session? Because, and the substance of my motion is, when we put the moratorium on, my knowledge of the moratorium was, we have a moratorium on selling recreational marijuana in this city from businesses. No recreational businesses in the city. I never was aware that we, part of that moratorium, was growing recreational. I was made aware of this two weeks ago, that that's part of this moratorium, that nobody can grow recreational marijuana in this city either. But it is allowed by everybody that's over 18. If you want to grow it, you can grow it and do what you want with it. You're supposed to smoke it.
Twenty-one.
It's twenty-one?
I believe so.
I think it's twenty-one. Okay, twenty-one. But if you have anybody in your household over twenty-one, they can grow six plants. And they can do what they want with it. Six plants, six foot high.
Correct, Mr. Mayor? From my understanding?
Yes. And there are people in this city that are growing more than six plants. I mean, there are some grow operations that are a lot bigger than that, that we know of, that we have no authority over. So what is actually, what are we doing? And see, that is what I'm saying. There is things in the making that are coming down the path from the county and from different cities that surround us that are going to make a hardship on Commerce City in the near future, in the very near future. And either we get in front of them, or we get run over by them. And, but I'm going to withdraw this in favor of study session, but I would suggest that everybody become aware of what's happening in the county and what's happening in cities that surround Commerce City. To basically Aurora, Denver, North Glenn, and the county are all gearing up for marijuana sales, recreational and medicinal. And we're being impacted by it because our citizens go out and smoke it, but we are not receiving any revenue or income from it. So I'm trying to figure out, what exactly are we stopping?
We'll be prepared to discuss that very issue. What can be grown, how much, and whether you can sell it or can't sell it in the study session. So I'm trying to turn to Jim when we can have it.
So in answer to your question about when could we schedule that, I can tell you that as a staff, we were always gearing up for the spring because the moratorium was scheduled to expire in July. We've done some initial research, but you're absolutely correct. Aurora has taken some action since we started that research. We've heard some rumblings from the county. We're going to be getting a referral regarding some of the things they're doing in the next couple of weeks, so...
They put a bill on, they have a bill for election that, to do marijuana in the county. They just put, they waited to the last minute to submit it, and it's on for the election coming up in November. So they actually, and their tax rates are a little bit lower than ours, and they could be right across the street from Commerce City selling marijuana that's going to impact our citizens.
Understood. And one of the things we were doing research on was, are the medical ordinances that we have in place applicable to recreational? And I know that's not getting at the issue of the grow operation, but absent some new ordinances that say explicitly where it can and cannot occur, it'd be left open to interpretation, and one could argue it could be allowed in every industrial zone district without those spacing requirements in place. So I would say it would take us probably a couple of months, potentially end of December, first part of January, to pull all that information together and even talk about draft ordinances that you could consider adopting.
Well, you have to tell them.
That's too late. That is absolutely too late. If we aren't going to talk about this before the election in November, we might as well just forget about it. Our moratorium isn't going to amount to anything because if they pass it in the county, we are surrounded by the county, and they can put up, they don't have no thousand-foot anything from our city. They can just set it right across the street from us, and we will be having direct impact. Yeah, and it's, when talking to other, I mean, I was at, me and Steve were at a meeting last Wednesday or Thursday. There are cities that we need to be gearing up now. We don't need to be waiting. If we're waiting, it's too late. We're, the boat's passed and we're off of it. So if we can't have a meeting within the next two study sessions, just forget about it. Because we're, the boat's going to sail without us on it, but we're going to receive direct impact from it.
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bullock, I appreciate that. We can absolutely have a study session on the topic. I guess what I was trying to relay is that the amount of our research will be incomplete, but we can absolutely have a discussion as soon as, I suppose, next week. But October 27th would be preferable so we'd have time to at least pull some information together.
All right.
I withdrew my...
I know you did. But you're still on the topic. I still have a lot of people lit up here. Mr. Douglas, you got comments on this?
Also, what was spoken about was a 3% sales tax that the county is opposing on other surrounding cities, so they want to cherry pick and say like oppose a 3% sales tax to Commerce City, Aurora, different areas that are growing this. And really, nothing that the county is doing to deserve that money. So we're going to be impacted with 3% sales tax on top of that, that we have to give them when we have our recreational or medical marijuana when we sell in the city. So that goes to what Renee's saying about lifting that portion up.
Okay, Councilwoman Elliott, on this topic?
I'm going to add to. So I know that there's going to be a lot of other specifics that'll be included in this because, just because of dynamics of this. And I realize that if we're going to look at amending this ordinance and aggressively working at this, and we have to be continuous with this, we can't just do it because of the fact that the county is jumping, and we want to make sure that our city obtains revenues that it deserves. But I guess it's a matter of just a continual discussion, whether it's, I would actually probably suggest weekly, whether it's a study session or even executive session, because there's so many aspects that go along with this. Enforcement and just a number of things. So I think if that's the route that we're going to take, we have to be pretty consistent and pretty aggressive and just be prepared.
Mr. McAdonick?
I'll withhold for a discussion, a study session.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, on this topic? No? Okay. Seeing no one else, I'll just say that, you know what, I actually talked to Jim a little bit about this tonight. I'm a little torn because I was opposed to Amendment 64. It did pass overwhelmingly, especially in our community. And my frustrations are this, that we have people, and I just had one the other day, Mr. Thomas brought to my attention, 90 plants in one yard, growing over six feet tall. And are we, are we keeping this with this moratorium in place? Are we protecting our community? Or is it here anyway, and we're just not getting to be able to generate some revenues to offset some of the impacts that are coming from our borders? These places are all over on our borders along Denver, now in Aurora, and if the county does it, we could see them on 80th Avenue, depending upon where they allow this stuff to happen. It's happening in residential neighborhoods, up to 90 plants at a time. And if we can't enforce it, we need to at least regulate it. I think that, my personal opinion is, the state did a disservice by allowing this to happen. That's my personal opinion. The fact is that the voters approved it. It's part of what we have to deal with. And if we're going to be impacted by it, which I believe we are, I believe anybody that wants to get marijuana, recreational or medical, anywhere within our community, they can go get it and they can bring it back here, or they can grow it within our community. And so it's a very frustrating topic to me because it's something that I don't condone, but we have to regulate it or we're just going to receive the impact. And I'm frustrated with that portion because if someone can show me that we're not already receiving the impact, we're just not receiving the income from it, I'm open to that discussion. Mr. Gaylor?
I agree with the mayor that we're missing a boat if everybody around us is selling it and they're bringing it into Commerce City to use. That's why I'm suggesting that we take a good, hard look at if we're going to keep the moratorium in place or not. And the only way to really discuss it is like Councilwoman Elliott said, is we explore these things, and that's why we need the study session because I'm really not prepared to intelligently tell you all of the implications tonight. And I think it needs to be carefully explored, and certainly you need to consider lifting the moratorium sooner rather than later, if you're going to do it. And the only way to do that really is to have a study session so we can explore what you want in the ordinance. If we do, we peel it.
And, you know, I'm looking forward to the study session. I'm sure I'll get additional information, but right now, I'm just trying to figure out, if someone can show me that we aren't receiving the impact because I believe we're receiving 100% of the impact, we're not receiving any of the benefit. And that concerns me because we're not protecting our community by having a moratorium. We're actually hurting our community by not generating any revenue, as much as I'm opposed to the whole concept of this marijuana thing statewide. So I'm looking forward to the study session, and I think one of the other things was when this came up, to extend the moratorium. I recall the city manager saying that this council has the opportunity and the ability to lift that moratorium anytime early that they want. So 90 days doesn't work in the scenario Mr. Bullock gave. So given that, I would appreciate a study session sooner than later so that we can have the information and decide how we're going to handle this so that we don't miss a window of opportunity, and continually only receive the impact and no benefit based on what other communities around us are doing. With that, I'll let it go. We'll go to a study session and have the discussion. Mr. Douglas, anything else on administrative business?
Yes. Had a question on, this is a deal with the park, with the Frontera, where we're at with that as far as finding a contractor for that project for that price that was put out for bid.
For the Frontera Park construction? I do not have that schedule in front of me. I don't know off the top of my head. We can definitely...
Carolyn's here. You're learning she's not here at this time. Can't, if Carolyn knows the answer...
Sure, Carolyn. I think the question is, what is the timing of the construction contract and procurement?
You were, you shut it on. Councilman Douglas, members of council, we had anticipated the RFP being released October 1st. However, we still have it in review, so the RFP for construction has not been released, but it should be within the next 10 days.
Okay. I'm looking at our management report, and it shows design contract was awarded for Turnberry and Village at Buffalo Run East Parks. And this was awarded to DHM Design. And, you know, this first project for Frontera has not been delivered, and now another project, these other two parks is being rewarded to them, DHM Design again, to design that park when... No, no, just as far as design. I'm sorry, as far as design, not construction. Let me get that straight. And based on their design, I know we're going for best value and all, what was put out, they're having a hard time with that, you know, as far as that construction coming through at that price, correct?
We're not sure yet because we still have not put it out to bid. So we're hoping that the market is going to respond favorably, and we'll take a similar approach as we did with the pool and looking at contingencies, even supplementing with grant funds, those types of things to make sure we can deliver Frontera Park.
Okay. As I'm just looking at this, is, I hear we got more projects going on and them having to do this design work as well without that one. then having to do this design work as well, without that one being finalized, and being, them being in the bid process when this initial project has not been finalized, so...
It's a very good point. The, we had always intended that there would be overlap in the design of the neighborhood parks, and the reason we went ahead and proceeded now with the design is that DHM is kind of wrapping up their work on Frontera. They're also a very large firm, they've got 40, 50 employees that they can respond to this work. The intent there was, I might have mentioned at a prior quarterly update, that combining Turnberry and Villages at Buffalo Run East into one project, we think we're gonna get some economies of scale that are gonna help the entire program.
Okay, all right. And that's on that one, and I was gonna talk about the transportation routes. I've driven through industrial area by Sand Creek Drive and 56th Avenue that connects up to your Doray Street. I'm not sure if Councilman McAdonny has brought this up with the Sand Creek Drive. When you turn right to go under 36, from 56th Avenue going east, and the road curves around, that traffic that is going southbound has a hard time trying to get any kind of traffic to go past underneath 36, past Sand Creek Drive.
270?
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, 270. Well, it's 36-270, I'm sorry. It's the 36-270 route, I'm sorry. Let me back that up. It's 270, not, it's 36 Highway through 270, but we're talking Commerce City here, so, 270. I'm not sure if it's just to put some sort of stop signs there to allow that traffic to keep moving, because there's so much traffic at the end, and towards, at the end of the day, heading south, it's just totally backed up from, I say in that corner section, all the way up to Holly, continuous traffic back there, because there's no way these folks can continue to go through, because it's like a three-way. And then, as you go up Vasquez, under 270, head north, there's a little elbow to the right that connects to East 58th Place, and that is so dangerous because folks come off of there, and you have people sitting there, and that's that side street where Cricket and the car wash and all that is. That's a very dangerous intersection, people come off there, they're not yielding to the traffic there. Of course, traffic that's already there has a yield to them, but it's just, I don't know, where the cars are just shooting by. So, I don't know if we can do some sort of traffic study there, just because that intersection is very dangerous, both intersections.
Yes, we could definitely put that on our schedule. That would be probably some cost associated with that. So, what I would suggest is that we put some preliminary numbers together and we could bring that back, if council wanted to direct us to do such a study in that area. I would say that, I know we did talk about the Dahlia Street Trailhead and that pinch point under the bridge, we are gonna be looking at trying to make some pet improvements out there in the 2015 budget, and then that slip ramp that you're referring to on northbound 85, that's really intended to alleviate some of the congestion at 60th and Parkway. And, I agree, I've taken it myself, it's not very safe, but it does serve its purpose. So, I think that's all part of an integrated system we'd have to look at.
Because it's kind of like a portion of where the dog track is, except that you don't have that traffic coming both ways, north and south, it's just, I'm to a certain extent, but it's kind of the same thing. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. In previous discussions between you and myself and Councilmember McAdonny, there was just discussion as far as Jason replacing my position on the Water Commission, and that we've never really discussed it and had it brought to council for a formal vote, so I want to bring that up tonight, because I understand that there is a commission meeting, which I just got the information tomorrow. And so, I just want to ensure, you know, proper representation tomorrow at the meeting. So, I sent an email earlier, but I just want to make sure that we discuss that this evening for council vote, to accept my resignation and accept the appointment of Councilmember McAdonny.
All right. So, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Councilwoman Elliott on the Water Commission Committee, correct?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, we did have a short discussion about Jason being the person to fill in, to take that slot of the membership of the Water Commission. Does the council have any concerns or questions regarding Jason becoming the member of the Water Commission?
No problem to you.
Is there a motion to appoint Mr. McAdonny?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to appoint Jason to the Water Commission Authority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Mr. Gaylor?
Did I hear Councilwoman Elliott say there's a meeting tomorrow? I didn't get notice of that.
Tomorrow, there's a meeting.
What time?
I'll tell you, Bob.
Because I have liquor license.
That would be 4:00.
What time?
4:00. I actually had received an email from Angelica confirming my attendance tomorrow, and I was not aware of it.
Yeah, 4:00, Bob.
Where?
Little Water District.
Water District? Are we attending that?
Yeah, because usually Greg would be there.
You attend, right?
I attend, yes.
With that, I may not be able to attend tomorrow with that notice, but I will do my best.
That's fine, I understand that, but at least for the next one, we're taking care of. And then, I'm glad I came up, because Mr. Gaylor can attend, because Greg's no longer with us. Right? All right. And you'll be there, right, Jim?
Yes, sir, as well as Mr. Xylas are outside council for water.
Perfect. All right, thanks. That's all you had, Mrs. Elliott?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. McAdonny?
Just real quickly, I had several discussions with citizens in the last week or two, and in spite of our vigorous efforts to communicate about 2K projects and status, lots of questions and mystery. I think a number of us on council also got a message from a citizen this week that put forward some suggestions about, or some misinterpretations about how monies are being appropriated or used. And I think, to me, it suggests that we still have to take a look at how we're getting the message out, right? We've made massive shifts in terms of our communication, our clarity of communication, and I know that this council had consistently suggested, guided staff with regard to the 2K efforts in particular, about transparency and, you know, the extensive communication, because of our past experience and the work that we've had to do over the years to explain our way through things that really should never have had to been explained that way, right? So, I don't have any answer. More than anything, I want to put this on the table, and I think this becomes a study session in and of itself, probably not for Monday, we've got way too much going on for that soon. But, the bottom line is, I would love for each of us to really put our ear to the ground with our citizens, see if they're aware of the available resources. As an example, I pointed to several citizens, pointed several citizens to our project website, to our economic development information that's available on the website, reminded them about our monthly city publication, because the questions I was getting, by and large, were questions that were answered through things that we're doing today. And so, then the question becomes, how are we missing each other? You have questions, we have information, we have questions, we get information, we want that shared with our citizens. How is it that what we're putting out there isn't being received? We can't guarantee receipt of our message to everybody, I know that, but at the same time, we've got to understand what is it that's causing that message not to be received, to try and improve or increase even a little bit over where we are today, if that makes sense. It seems as if we're still dealing with those perception issues of people not understanding the separate districts, water, fire, city...
Railroads.
Railroads, metro districts, you name it. And, in spite of our efforts to work with our partners through things like our monthly newspaper-like publication, that may only serve, as it's currently framed, to perpetuate some of those misconceptions, because it is a joint publication. The reality is, we are individual entities. Again, I don't have any answer or a specific call to action, other than I suspect we all get these kinds of questions. I would love it if each of us would think about, what are those questions you get all the time, and don't just deal with the question again, but make a note of it, put them together. We've talked in the past about putting together sort of a frequently asked questions list on the city website. I'm reminded as the growth is, we're growing again, right? We have a lot of new people to the community. It is an opportunity to do better than we did in the past, as people come into our community, to give them sort of a leg up on understanding, as opposed to have another wave of people who get, receive misinformation from somebody who doesn't have a whole story. And now, we have to fight to get people to get back to a point of trust and belief and understanding. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. And, what's funny is, we did an interview tonight for a citizen that wanted to be on a committee. He's been in the city less than a year, and he's already navigating 3C and knows how, and by the email that we received and insinuations of what we did and how we did it, I realized that there's some people, no matter how many times you tell them, they are going to still think what they think, they're gonna go out and put the rumor out that sounds the best to them, because that's how they keep things going. And so, sometimes you just have to let those people go. I mean, I wouldn't even dignify answering that email, because I just felt that it was a bait, that he was trying to get us into something that, it didn't make no sense, because the issues that were brought up were clarified for the last three or four years, and they shouldn't even be out there anymore. And I'm thinking, where would you get this unless you're just making it up? So, sometimes, it's just like you say, no matter how much information you put out, you're still gonna miss them, you know?
Is that the email we received concerning tennis courts?
Yep.
All right. Now, I wanted to let you all know, I did have staff respond, and I'd like you all to have that response. Mike Brown did a great job of responding, and maybe that's something that needs to be on our C3.gov, because the response was very appropriate for the questions that were posed.
And I think that's at the heart of where I wanted to go. I had a couple citizens that I've had exchanges with who had had one-on-one communication with Public Works about the E470 ramp, as an example, or about this, or about that. And so, we're not in the loop on that. And now, you've got a citizen who has an email between them and a member of staff about a project, and what happens is another citizen asks a question, and if we don't answer the question in the exact same way, the perception is that we are not giving accurate information. And it creates an environment of breaking down that very thing that we've made such a priority for the 2K projects in particular, which is transparency and complete story being available to everybody along the way. So, I want to make sure that our project website and any of those things, and I think, you know, the landmark traffic is a great example, right? You have perceptions of traffic problems, and, you know, I don't know that I knew until this most recent episode unfolded, that there had been the amount of back and forth with the community on that, and it's, you know, in Mr. Benson and I and Mr. Douglas's backyard, effectively. So, we can't be in the loop on every single citizen communication, but I think we, I think what I'm asking for is that when staff is involved in an interaction with a citizen about something that is likely to be asked again by another citizen, or could possibly be asked by another citizen, that we think about how that information gets turned into a standard canned response and question, and made available as a frequently asked question. Or, at minimum, when those are identified, they get blasted back to council and say, hey, this is our standard response on the 470 project, this is our standard response on the 96th Avenue project, right? This is our standard response on the Frontera project, whatever the case might be, so that we don't risk being out of sync or perceived as providing conflicting information, if that makes sense. So, I don't want to belabor it, if you guys can give that some thought, and we can perhaps pick that up again, or brainstorm offline, whatever.
Great. Thanks, Jason. And I did send you all that response. Mr. Douglas?
I'm sorry, one more thing. Since Jason brought that about landmark, Jim, when are we gonna meet with, are we, are we meeting with, is our staff, our city council collectively meeting with the residents in that landmark 105th, 106th area?
There is a meeting scheduled for Thursday night with, I believe, both Public Works and Police Department staff, Thursday night.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, that was, that's on our city calendar on the C3.gov website, and it's also, I believe there was a Facebook blast at some point from staff on that, I feel like I saw.
I got that information from Ms. Halsted, so I believe that to be true, yes.
Yeah, I think they tried to publicize that a couple of different ways, Steve.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't see it on there.
If you, where are you looking?
Well, even with our city manager reports.
If you look at C3gov.com on the calendar.
Yeah.
But, that said, sorry, that's a little out of order. To Mr. Douglas's point, that kind of meeting would make sense to have as a calendar item, sent to council, I would think, just like we had the second, I think the, wasn't the Stewart, no, I guess that one wasn't either, the 27J, Stewart Middle School, Reunion Middle School, or Reunion Elementary, meaning at Stewart was not a calendar item either. But, those kinds of items, I would think should be consistently put on our agenda, just so we have that opportunity.
On the calendar. You can handle that, Kent, Jim? Anyone else, administrative business? Saying none, we'll move on into our agenda. Reports, given the fact that Mr. McBroom is out. City manager report, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just want to call your attention to one thing. Mr. Douglas had pointed it out earlier here. We have our planning on awarding a design services contract for Turnberry and Villages at Buffalo Run East, and the reason that that is not before you for action is that the contract price is under $250,000. So, rather than just go and take that action, we felt it was important to inform you with a quick summary here in a memorandum that's been prepared by the Parks Department, really that tries to model what we did last Tuesday night with the pool, kind of outline our decision process, the selection team, really a lot of the background that went into that decision. And, again, as we expected, the combining of those two into one project, right now, we're looking at a design award of $227,000, and the design budget for both parks is $314,000, not including contingency, which is an additional 10%. So, very happy that the market is responding. DHM came through as really the best value, which was a little bit of a different process than we went through with the pool. It was not a hard bid, since these are design services. So, I'm open for any questions, as well as Ms. Keith.
Anyone have any questions for Jim on that? Okay. Mr. Gaylor, report?
I think I've covered everything I have to cover tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll go into my report, try to keep it as brief as possible. Had an ACC meeting, me and Rick, Rotary, then I did an Elk Land Tour, and that's the Environmental Learning for Kids, their organization that tries to get inner-city kids introduced to the outdoors and wildlife. They're putting together a new facility off of Peoria Street, around 49th, and they're gonna be close to our community, and they work very close with the refuge. One of the things that I asked them to look at and see what it would take to do is a program helping to educate our community living next to wildlife, and the concerns that I've constantly brought forward to this council about not when we have the plague, not if we have the plague, but when we have the plague on the refuge and our surrounding neighborhoods where there are prairie dogs, the fact that we're dealing with skunks constantly in certain neighborhoods, we're dealing with squirrels in neighborhoods, we're dealing with... neighborhoods, we're dealing with squirrels in neighborhoods, we're dealing with coyotes. To help try to put together a program that would be accessible to communities, to be able to offer to help educate the residents on living with wildlife or near wildlife, given the proximity of the refuge and the management thereof of that wildlife. So I know she's going to be talking to Tri-City Health and some others and maybe to help put together a proactive approach to dealing with issues that I foresee this community having with wildlife, rather than waiting for the latter for something to happen. So I'm very interested in what the Educational Learning for Kids organization comes up with. Then I attended the Executive Committee Breakfast with Brian, Commerce City hosted. And then the one I didn't get to attend was the dedication and open house for the Conter Heritage and Cultural Center. But I know several of the council members were there. I heard it's a very wonderful museum scenario for the Historical Society and offices for the Cultural Council. And I will get up there soon to see what they've done with that. I also attended the Metro Mayor's Caucus. There was a second Airport Coordinating Committee meeting. Myself and Rick Teeter and Steve Douglas participated in the 27J Foundation Golf Tournament. And then we had the Quality Community Foundation Wine Tasting Event Friday. So that'll round it up in short. Does anybody have anything that they feel they want to add that I may have missed?
I got something I want to add, but it has nothing to do with a report.
We're in reports, so why don't you keep that to yourself for now if it's not part of a report. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, me and Renee attended the Boys and Girls Club Metro Denver Commitment Celebration and it was well-attended and a great deal of history. We spoke to some pioneers that started out the Boys and Girls Club. Used to be the Boys Club and then later on they introduced the girls with it as well. So looking forward to that groundbreaking of the Boys and Girls Club on the dock track. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. McAdonie?
Thanks, real quickly, and I touched on this in my earlier comment, the school district held a preliminary community meeting on the potential elementary school to be built in Reunion, should the bond that they have on the ballot this November pass. That meeting was held this past Thursday at Stewart Middle School. A number of staff from the district and a pretty good number of parents from anywhere between Highway 2 and Tower Road corridor attended that meeting. The design of the school is sort of a variation on a theme, if you will, from what we've seen with, let's say, Turnberry or Second Creek, but some reconsiderations based on lessons learned in those designs for enhancing the ability to use that for public purposes as well as having pieces of that building still partitioned off in terms of access to classrooms, et cetera. Really good positive feedback and it sounds like the one piece that still needs to see some additional details on are some of the siding within the neighborhood and the access impacts, if you will. Second Creek is a great example of really miserable traffic movement around that school at peak times. I think Turnberry, from what I hear, is a little bit better. Sounds like they tried to give some consideration to, you know, bus loading and unloading versus mom and dad drop-off type activity. But either way, exciting to see the designs, the comments from those in attendance was very positive. And ideally, they're trying to front-end as much as they reasonably can in advance of having that bond pass so that they can really have the appropriate momentum after November to see that that building comes out of the ground in time for the subsequent school year. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I have a report. Just a notice.
Want to give notice of something, Mr. Bullock?
A lot of you may not know him, but he was the second African-American senator that was elected to Colorado. Regis Groff passed away. And the reason I say this because he was my teacher, Smiley, and he was my sister's teacher, Smiley. And then he decided that he could do just as much in the state senate. And so he went to the state senate and he was there and he was the one that helped pass the Martin Luther King Birthday for Colorado. And he worked on, Colorado would do no business without South Africa while they had apartheid. So he did a lot of things for the state of Colorado as far as we're concerned. And his son, Peter Groff, was the first president of the senate, African-American. But he passed away yesterday from cancer and he's going to be sorely missed. But you had to know him to love him like we do. But it's just a notice that people out there that are listening to this will know exactly who Regis Groff is.
Thanks, Renee. Thanks, Renee. I'm glad I let you give that notice. If there be nothing further to come before this council this evening, we are adjourned.